The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom. The birds are singing. The air is fresh. The scent of fresh grass is fresh. The flowers bloom.
Session for the City of Wheat Ridge. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for December 2nd, 2019. Thank you for joining us. We will start our meeting tonight with citizen comment on agenda items, and I have several people signed up to speak, so when I call your name, if you would come to the podium and adjust the microphone so we can hear you clearly, and give us your first name and last name, if you would spell your last name and give us your address, you'll have three minutes after you sign in. So, our first speaker is Deborah Young, and Colette Beneski is on deck. Yes, come right up here. And just adjust the microphone so it's convenient for you, and use your first name and your last name.
Okay. My name is Deborah Young, Y-O-U-N-G. I live at 12064 West 31st Place in Wheat Ridge, and I'm talking to you tonight about a group home, a sober living home, that is right next door to me. I spoke to the council back in September, so this is just a little... It is my... It is not my intention to discriminate against the sober living group home, which is owned by Monarch Sober Living, or the people who live there. My concern is how it changes the neighborhood with safety issues, such as the residents making U-turns, a lot of parked cars, and this week I noticed with the snow, driving a little bit too fast on the ice and the snow recklessly. Please take into consideration that our block and neighborhood has many families with young children. What I have observed in the past few months is the sober living home is very much like an Airbnb, or a boarding house with many people coming and going. Since late July, when the sober living home moved in, I have talked with many neighbors, as well as people who live in the Wheat Ridge area. I can say that 98% of these people have no idea that group homes were zoned R1. People work hard to own a home and believe they live in a single-family home zoned R1. Homeowners should be advised when a business such as this moves in. The sober living home at 12044 West 31st Place was a four-bedroom home that is now a seven-bedroom home. Without regulations, this home could house many residents. According to West Metro Fire, depending on the size of the home, could house at least two residents per room. Thank you once again for giving me the opportunity to bring this to your attention, and Amanda, thank you for hearing our neighbors' voices and listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Colette Beneski, and Lori Odom on deck.
Hi there. I'm Colette Beneski, C-O-L-E-T-T-E-B-E-N-E-S-K-I. My address is 12083 West 31st Place in Wheat Ridge, and like my neighbor Deb, I was also here in September to discuss this issue of a sober living group home that has come into our neighborhood. I think initially, you know, our reaction in the neighborhood, we were all a little bit distraught because we didn't know that this type of home could exist in our R1-districted neighborhood. For myself personally, I have two young children who, you know, we've felt comfortable letting them play in the street, ride their bikes. My son's 11, my daughter's 7, so they're just at the age where they're able to have a little bit of freedom. But with the uptick in the traffic on our street, I feel like it's a little bit less safe. There's definitely more parked cars on our street in front of the house that extends, you know, on the properties on either side of the street. And then on Sundays, they also seem to be having some meetings there with people who aren't residents of the home. I don't know if it's families of the residents or what, but that then attracts quite a bit more traffic and cars. So, just generally, I would say, you know, we're a little bit worried about the character and quality of our neighborhood, and, you know, certainly, we have empathy for these people who are, you know, taking the initiative to have a second shot in life, but it just seems like there's a bit of a gap in terms of the regulations that exist, especially like in the Wheat Ridge ordinances. There's, when I looked into it, regulations around group homes for the elderly or group homes for children, but there's nothing around these sober living group homes. And so, I just think it's important that we look at this issue, put it under a microscope, and, you know, look at examples of what some other cities have done. I know Prescott, Arizona, is a city where they've developed recent regulations, I think in 2019, around sober living group homes. So, I thank you for taking this under consideration and looking at it a little bit more thoroughly and protecting our neighborhood.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori Odom, and Barbara St. John on deck.
11490 West 38th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. Thank you for your interest in considering an ordinance for the City of Wheat Ridge to help curb youth vaping. As a longtime Wheat Ridge resident representing the medical community and Jeffco PTA, a mother and grandmother, I strongly support the measures you are considering. As of 2017, we know that Colorado had the highest youth vaping rate in the country. Anecdotal information suggests the rate may have increased even further, especially in Jeffco. We know that nearly 95% of adult smokers first use tobacco before age 21. We also know that youth who vape regularly are four times more likely to be smoking combustible cigarettes in a year, 9.5 times as likely to use marijuana, and 8.6 times as likely to use another's prescription drugs. Moreover, in addition to the disruption of normal brain development by teen and young adult use of nicotine, marijuana, and other mind-altering drugs, the hazards of inhaling toxic substances associated with vaping have become all too well-known. As of two weeks ago, nearly 3,000 cases of vaping-associated lung injury had been reported to the CDC with 47 deaths. In 2,000 of the cases, the age ranged from 13 to 78, with a median age of 24, and one teen required a lung transplant. To help deal with this health crisis, 26 municipalities in Colorado have passed some form of tobacco retail licensing, including neighbors Golden, Lakewood, Edgewater, and Denver, and 20 municipalities have raised the tobacco sale age to 21, including Edgewater and Denver, and Golden is voting on this issue on December 12th. In addition, in November, ballot measures enacting taxes for the first time on electronic cigarettes and vaping products passed in Pittkin, Eagle, and Summit Counties, and Crested Butte, Glenwood Springs, Newcastle, Vail, and Boulder. Again, I greatly appreciate and strongly support the measures you are considering enacting in Wheat Ridge, which include licensing of all tobacco retail establishments, raising the minimum age of sale to 21, requiring all tobacco products to be behind the service counter, establishing a minimum clerkage, issuing no new tobacco retailer license within 1,000 feet of a school, not allowing mobile sale of tobacco products, and following the best practices for local proactive enforcement and penalties for violation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara St. John, and Lynette Namba on deck.
Barbara St. John, 3480 Everett Street. I'll be brief. I know everyone's been reading the papers about all of the vaping hospitalizations and deaths, actually, over 400 of the former, and I think about 50 of the latter. We're all very, very concerned, and I'm concerned about Wheat Ridge High School. I called the school nurse the other day to see what they were doing, and they do have quite a few programs and a graduated system of dealing with people. They start out, of course, with education, and then they end up with penalties. I just think it's so important if we keep this product out of the kids' reach, and that would help if we licensed the dealers and if we raised the age to 21.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynette Namba.
Hi, I'm Lynette Namba, N-A-M-B-A. I live at 2977 Reed Street in Wheat Ridge. Mayor Starke and members of the council, thank you for considering stronger policies to protect the health and well-being of youth. As a Wheat Ridge Heal Committee member, part of the Community Health and Engagement Team at Kaiser Permanente, and as a parent, we support raising the minimum age of sale of tobacco to 21 and instituting tobacco retail licensing, as these are effective policy solutions to decrease youth access to tobacco. Prevention is the key to decreasing the number of young people addicted to tobacco and preventing tobacco-related chronic disease, as well as premature death. 95% of adults who smoke started before, by the age of 21. 18- to 20-year-olds purchase less than 2% of tobacco products, but they are 90% of the supply to their underage peers. Raising the minimum legal sale age to purchase tobacco to 21 can prevent initiation among youth by putting legal purchasers outside the social circles of most high school students. Licensing allows a jurisdiction to have an accurate census of retailers and is a leverage point to help ensure retailers are complying with tobacco control laws. Requiring a license to sell puts tobacco more on par with alcohol, firearms, and other items with health risks. Tobacco retail licensing laws accompanied by enforcement with regular compliance checks and meaningful penalties are effective in reducing youth tobacco use, initiation, and maintenance. Thank you.
That's all of the people that I have signed up to speak tonight. Is there anyone here who has not signed up who would like to speak? Please come to the podium and give us your first name and last name and an address, and we'll go from there.
My name is Rhonda Valdez. I'm a nurse, and I live at 8747 West Cornell Avenue, Lakewood, 80227. So, I am the nurse at Wheat Ridge High School. I'm the person Barb spoke with, and I'm going to try to be brief, too. Just wanted to mention that, yes, we have programs at Wheat Ridge High School. We're trying to chase after this epidemic, and so we have prevention efforts, we have education efforts, we have efforts that we get groups of teenagers together, and we call it "social justice issues," and we believe that tobacco is one of the byproducts because there is some inequalities. And what I'm hoping that Wheat Ridge will do, like Lakewood did, us moms got in together at Lakewood, and we passed the ordinance that we would have a tobacco licensing law so we could have some bite into this, and so I'm hoping Wheat Ridge does the same thing, because I see the youth, and unfortunately, this is such an addictive product. It is awful. The vaping products, I don't know if anyone knows that much about it, but they're not regulated, and it's just, I've heard moms actually tell me, their youth that are now graduated, gone to college, they sleep with a vape on their chest, wake up in the middle of the night, take a drag off it, and then go back to sleep. It is that addictive, so it's so much worse than cigarettes. So, I'm just hoping we will put some bite into it, consider this law to protect the youth, because big tobacco's already gotten their hands in their pockets. Let's try to help them get it out, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on their public comment tonight? Okay, we will close our public comment. Just for the record, I would like to say that Ms. Hoppe, Councilwoman Hoppe, has an excused absence, and the rest of our councilors are here. Thank you all for being here. Okay, we will go on to Agenda Item Number One. This is Refugee Resettlement in Wheat Ridge. Ms. DeGoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had representatives from the International Rescue Committee visit the mayor and I a couple weeks ago, and they requested some time in front of City Council to speak about a new executive order from the Trump administration in relation to refugee resettlement. So this evening, we have Jennifer Wilson and Victoria Francis here to give a presentation.
Thank you, City Manager DeGoff, and members of the Wheat Ridge City Council. Mayor Starke, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Before I start, I also want to congratulate you on celebrating 50 years of the City of Wheat Ridge. That's a huge milestone, and I'm really thrilled for all of you. As City Manager DeGoff mentioned, we are here tonight to discuss the consent for refugee resettlement in the City of Wheat Ridge, and I am from the International Rescue Committee in Denver, where I serve as Executive Director. We are one of the three resettlement agencies that operates in the state of Colorado to welcome refugees on arrival. So I'm going to give you some background, and I apologize, I'm going to cover a lot of information, but also in your packets, which I believe Victoria handed out copies of, you will find an overview as Attachment 1, and so you can follow along there. And I'm going to start from the...
Do I have a paper copy?
Very good. Does anybody need a paper copy?
They should have a paper copy.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
I'm going to start with some background information, because I recognize this may be the first time that some of this information has been brought before the City Council. So, we are here because of Executive Order 13888, which was issued by the Trump administration on September 26th of this year. That Executive Order, or EO, mandates that state and local government provide consent for the U.S. Refugee Admissions Program, and it requires that the U.S. Department of State, under its Bureau of Population, Refugees, and Migration, which runs the U.S. Refugee Admissions Program, develop and implement a local consent mechanism. So, that Bureau, which we call PRM for Population, Refugees, and Migration, has elected to task resettlement agencies, like the International Rescue Committee, in obtaining local consent, and has made its annual Notice of Funding Opportunity the mechanism for implementation. So it's all a little bit complicated, but I'm going to try to orient you to it so that you know why we're here. So basically, resettlement agencies every year apply for funding under this Notice of Funding Opportunity to provide the services and support to refugees on arrival. And this year, when we respond, we will be required to submit letters of consent from each municipality where we intend to initially place refugees. These can be individuals or families. The written consent is required as part of our response to that Notice of Funding Opportunity, and consent must be provided by January 21st of 2020. So the three resettlement agencies that operate in Colorado are African Community Center, Lutheran Family Services, Rocky Mountains, and the International Rescue Committee. We are here tonight on behalf of all three. And we haven't been here before you prior, because before this executive order, the resettlement agencies were required to consult with local communities and stakeholders where more than 25 refugees were resettled each year. We've never reached that level of refugee resettlement in the City of Wheat Ridge. So there was no requirement for any jurisdiction to provide consent under the prior mechanisms, and newly arrived refugees were typically placed where they had U.S. ties. So those would be friends or family who were already residing in the area, and where they could access the resettlement agencies, have access to public transportation, good opportunities for employment, and so forth. So, the U.S. Refugee Admissions Program is a longstanding program. It was codified into U.S. law with the passage of the Refugee Act of 1980, and the Department of State's Bureau of Population, Refugees, and Migration partners with resettlement agencies like ours and with local communities so that we can provide services to refugees who are approved for resettlement. It's a public-private partnership. We work really closely with local communities, we bring a lot of private resources to the table to augment federal resources, and we work with all of the local services that are available in communities. The U.S. accepts a limited number of refugees each year. Last year, federal fiscal year was a very low number, set at 30,000. This year, federal fiscal year '20 is even lower, at 18,000. It's the lowest in history. The president, in consultation, has the authority to set that number. It's called the Refugee Admission Ceiling, and he or she does that each year in consultation with Congress and sets it through a presidential determination that's supposed to be ordered or issued by September 30th of each year. Oops, sorry. I accidentally went too far. Thank you. Okay. Refugees who are referred for resettlement have to meet certain criteria in order to be admitted to the United States. So just to be clear, they cannot apply for resettlement here. They are referred by the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees, also known as the UN Refugee Agency, and they have to meet the definition of refugee under U.S. government law or government policy, excuse me, which means they have to have been persecuted or have a credible fear of persecution based on their nationality, ethnicity, religion, political affiliation, or membership in a political, social group. They have to be among those refugees that the president has determined to be of special humanitarian concern to the United States. They have to be otherwise admissible under U.S. law, so they can't have been found to have been guilty of certain crimes overseas, and they cannot be firmly resettled in any other country. This is just giving you a sense of the process. As I mentioned, the UNHCR refers people, they really focus on the most vulnerable cases, so we're looking at people who have urgent medical needs, who may be survivors of violence or torture, children at risk, and women and girls at risk. And once someone is referred to the U.S. for resettlement, they go through a really extensive vetting process. It's the strictest process in the entire world. They have to go through eight different federal government agencies to be cleared, pass security checks in six different government security databases, complete five different background checks, pass four biometric security checks, pass three separate in-person interviews conducted by trained Department of Homeland Security personnel, clear two inter-agency security checks, and on average, wait two years before they are actually allowed to resettle. That's after an average of 17 years that people have been displaced. Once they go through all of that process and they're approved for resettlement, then they are referred to one of the nine national resettlement agencies here in Colorado. As I mentioned, we have three. So I want you to understand what the resettlement agencies do, because you may be wondering why any of this matters at all, so forgive me, because this is a long list of services, but I think it's really important to understand. The resettlement agencies provide case management, health, economic empowerment, and other supportive services. So that means we prepare for people before they even arrive in the United States, we make arrangements for specialized services, we secure housing, we meet them at the airport on arrival, we provide interpretation, we help kids enroll in school, we help families connect to public benefits while they need them, with the goal of getting off them quickly, we conduct home visits to make sure they're in a safe environment and know how to use their homes and stay safe, we help them with initial budgeting, access social security, learn about the community, and orient them to U.S. culture. For health, we make sure they access health screenings and have immunizations, we connect them to primary care providers so they have a medical home, we connect families to WIC, ensure that they have access to ongoing specialty care if it's needed, provide health insurance literacy education, and provide medical case management so they can navigate the healthcare system. For economic empowerment, we make sure that people understand the U.S. workforce and that they're ready for a job here by providing job readiness training. We support job development and placement, offer career counseling so they can work toward long-term goals, work on ongoing budgeting, engage them with employment mentors so that they can work toward getting into some sector or industry that may be of interest, connect them to English language assistance, help them with financial literacy and coaching, and offer credit and asset-building loans so they can get on their feet and thrive economically. For family stabilization, we help those who have higher levels of risk, people who've survived domestic violence or sexual assault, for example. We help people connect to mental health resources when they're needed, provide group acculturation classes so they get adjusted to life in the U.S. and learn how to deal with stress and process the trauma that they've experienced. We support youth in social, emotional learning and leadership development skills, making sure that they're also able to adjust well after the stress of resettlement. We connect people with family mentors, help them with digital literacy, teach them how to use public transportation to navigate the community, provide rehabilitation services to people who've survived torture, help family members reunite with people they may be separated from, and provide immigration legal services so people can pursue naturalization and become U.S. citizens. So you can see, that's a lot of services that we provide. We do serve people for up to five years, but the initial service period tends to be the most crucial. So refugees in Colorado, we've been engaged in the Refugee Resettlement Program since 1980, and we've welcomed more than 60,000 refugees, about 1% of Colorado's total population. And you'll see that the populations that arrive really mirror different events in history. In 1982, the top population arriving was from Vietnam, in 1992, from the then Soviet Union, 1998, former Yugoslavia, mostly from Bosnia, and in 2017, Afghanistan, many of them special immigrant visa holders who served the U.S. mission in Afghanistan. Within the state, most refugees are placed in the Denver metro area, about 80%, 13% go to northern Colorado, primarily Greeley, but also some in Fort Morgan, and then 7% go to Colorado Springs. The number that we resettle in Colorado is about 1% to 2% of the number admitted to the United States every year, pretty consistently. And over the last two fiscal years in Wheat Ridge, we've resettled 13 refugees, so not a large number. Of that number, 62% came from the Democratic Republic of the Congo and 38% from the Ukraine. You may be well aware that immigrants are a vital part of the community here in Wheat Ridge, and according to the New American Economy, there are just over 84,000 immigrants, or about 11% of the population, living in Congressional District 7, with a total spending power of about $2 billion, and they make up a significant portion of the construction workforce and the manufacturing workforce in the district as well. So what does consent mean? What are we asking for? We're asking for consent to initially place refugees here in the City of Wheat Ridge, and if the City Council agrees to that, then basically the city will allow refugee resettlement agencies to place refugees here in the city, and you'll pass a resolution to provide consent to that initial resettlement. A copy of that resolution would then be provided to the resettlement agencies to submit to Department of State with their responses to the Notice of Funding Opportunity. So, if you do not consent, will refugees still be able to live in Wheat Ridge? Yes, they will, but it looks very, very different for them. The executive order would prevent the resettlement agencies from actually placing refugees in this community, so we would not secure housing for people in Wheat Ridge, and we would not be able to provide them with any services for the first 90 days. And again, that's a really critical time. When people get connected, they start to stabilize, it lays the foundation for success over the longer term. It's important to know that refugees who arrive in the U.S. come with full legal status, they have freedom of mobility, so even if we don't place people here initially, they're welcome to move into the city. The benefits of providing consent and why it's important are that some refugees have chosen to make Wheat Ridge their home over the years, and some of them have family members that they would like to be reunited with. So if consent is provided and a family member is approved for resettlement and has a U.S. tie, a friend or family member in Wheat Ridge, then we can place that newly arrived refugee close to that social support mechanism. If consent is not provided, then we cannot place that newly arrived refugee in the City of Wheat Ridge close to that social support. That's even if it's a close relationship, such as a spouse or a child. Consent would also allow resettlement agencies to ensure that refugees in your community are receiving the vital services. We went through that whole long list. Those are all things that are initiated within the first 90 days. If consent is not provided, then we are not able to provide those services, so it could be that refugees would be in Wheat Ridge but not be served for that initial period. The other benefit of providing consent is that we regularly provide technical assistance to communities where refugees are resettled. So we exist not only to support refugees, but also to serve the communities that receive them. We frequently work with police, with fire, and first responders to ensure that they're trained and aware of refugees in the community and how to work well with them. We also support school districts and health clinics and other providers. We work very closely with Jeffco Public Schools, we work with Stride Community Health Centers to make sure that they're well-equipped to serve refugees as well. And then we engage with faith groups and civic organizations and individual volunteers who want to be involved and help their new neighbors learn how to get around their community and play a role in the resettlement process. So once again, we're here to request that the City Council consider a resolution for consent at the upcoming City Council meeting, and we would like that consent to provide authorization for the three resettlement agencies, African Community Center, Lutheran Family Services, Rocky Mountains, and International Rescue Committee in Denver, to initially place refugees within your jurisdiction. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I will throw this open to questions from council then. Ms. Noslerbeck.
Thanks so much for being here. I just had a question. Are there other community... I assume that you're just traveling all around the state right now. I assume that you're just traveling all around the state right now and trying to get these resolutions passed. Are there any communities that have not passed the resolution?
Thank you for your question. Yes, we are going all around the Denver metro area primarily at present, also with some work in northern Colorado and southern Colorado. And so far, we have not had any community saying, "No, we will not provide consent." We do have resolutions in progress with a number of different municipalities and with all seven of the counties in the Denver metro area. We're hopeful that we will be able to secure consent from all of them, so there will be no restrictions on people being able to be placed with their loved ones.
Great, thanks. And just to clarify, this is just passing a resolution to continue to do what you have always been doing?
Yes, that's correct. Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and we don't anticipate that it would result in any change to the number of refugees arriving into Wheat Ridge unless there were refugees who chose to come here, who were not initially placed here and then had refugees come. But we wouldn't foresee, for example, that all of a sudden, all of the refugees resettled in Colorado would be placed in Wheat Ridge.
Right. And I'm sorry, I just have one more question. You said that, was it 30,000 this year, and then next year it will be 19,000?
So for federal fiscal year 2019, the national refugee admission ceiling was set at 30,000. That's compared to a historic average of 95,000 per year. For federal fiscal year '20, which started October 21, it's been set at a historic low of 18,000 for the country.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this question may not necessarily be for you, but I just first want to say thank you for coming in, and I appreciate the work you're doing. And it appears that this executive order has caused you to make sort of the circle around different city councils, and I appreciate you giving us this sort of lay down on what's happening. In the resolution that we're going to pass, it does urge a, does have some language in there relative to urging the governor of Colorado to provide consent as well. Has the governor's office provided consent, or what's the status of that?
Yes, thank you. The governor's office is working on their consent letter, and we anticipate having it before Christmas. We don't expect any trouble with that at all. So we could even remove that language. There's no need to urge them. They are absolutely on board.
Well, then, I guess in that vein, as I look at this, you had mentioned the school district. Has the school district provided any sort of letter consent or any resolution to that effect?
That's a great question. They have not, and the executive order does not specify anything other than city and county, as the jurisdictions will also state that the city and county levels are the jurisdictions that need to provide consent. We have, though, worked with Jeffco Public Schools very, very closely and have a wonderful working relationship with them. They've really opened their arms and welcomed refugee students into their classrooms and have been just fantastic partners. So when we talk with them at our quarterly community consultations, our question is usually around, "How can we do more? And how can we help more refugees in our schools?", rather than any concern about that impact. And that doesn't mean that there aren't challenges. There are always challenges when people who haven't lived together start to live together, but we work through those in collaboration.
Well, I fully support this, and I just would like to see us include a list of other entities that may also consider or want to enact a similar letter of consent, because as I review the executive order as issued, it doesn't give a definition of what a locality or local government is. It just says, "Local government." And a recent lawsuit filed in November 21 indicated that was a concern and a gray area. So if we can provide a list of the other special districts and political entities within the city, and then notify those entities of the same that we did this, that would ensure that you've got all your bases covered.
Absolutely, thank you. That's an excellent point. And I also, it reminds me, I should have mentioned that although we're here tonight talking to you about the executive order, it in no way implies that we're endorsing the legality of the executive order, but we are complying in the interest of ensuring that those individuals whose lives are in the balance and whose lives would be deeply affected by us not complying are not negatively affected.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Altean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank you for your time tonight. I imagine you've had a lot of busy nights with this. And I was just really impressed with the amount of work agencies like yours do to, you know, make sure that people who need to find security in communities can do that. And I'm just impressed with that work and grateful for it. And I just, I seem to remember reading somewhere in the packet, are some of the people we're talking about here, you know, kids that are getting placed in foster homes?
Yes, that's correct. There are children who are resettled through the Unaccompanied Refugee Minors Program, and that is run by Lutheran Family Services, and they place those children in foster care.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your time, and I definitely support the work you're doing and supporting this moving forward.
Thank you. And I have to say, for my part, going around to all these city council meetings and meeting with local government mayors, we've been impressed by all of the work that you all do. So thank you for everything that you bring.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
I'd like to move a consensus forward to bring this resolution to the next available meeting.
Do we have a consensus? We have a consensus there, and that would be a week from today. So we will plan to bring this to our city council for formal action a week from tonight.
Yes, gladly. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and Ms. Francis for coming, and your associate. Thank you very much. Our next item number two is regulation of group homes. We have Mr. John Stones with Community Development, and our attorney, Mr. Dahl, is here to kick this off, if you will. Let me go to Mr. Johnstone.
I think we can start with Mr. Dahl.
Well, Mr. Dahl, you picked the short straw, so you are up.
Yes, I did pick the short straw. I apologize for just getting over the last of a cold, so I don't have my usual voice.
As long as you didn't bring it with you.
I didn't bring it with me. But I've noticed that people edging away for the last week or so, they kind of subtly move a little further away.
It's a zero-sum game, so.
It's, you know, it's all you can do. What can I say? You have a memo from me in the packet, but what I do want to do is give you a little background on the Fair Housing Act amendments and why that brings us here, and what the city's history has been around group homes for handicapped and disabled, because I think that informs not only what the city has done, but what the city can do and what it can't do, as other cities can and can't do across the country. Now that we have 30 years plus of case law under the Fair Housing Act amendments from 1988, that's federal statute. It is supported by or it's aligned with two other federal statutes, the ADA, which we're very familiar with in terms of adjusting governmental programs to accommodate the disabled, and the Rehabilitation Act, which does much the same thing. In any event, the Fair Housing Act amendments, as pertinent here, prohibits discrimination of the disabled, including the handicapped. And throughout this discussion, I'll just use the term "disabled," which is kind of the preferred term for that group inclusively. But to prohibit discrimination against the disabled in government programs, and you might say, "Well, how does zoning be a government program?" And the answer is, "It's a program you provide. You provide zoning as a program." We often think of zoning restrictions as regulations, and why are they a program? A program is meals on wheels. You know, a program is things where you reach out and you give things to people. But honestly, the case law is very clear, that zoning regulations, building regulations, parking regulations, fire regulations are all programs that you perform, and you perform them for the benefit of people, just as you perform services to the aging, and you perform meals on wheels. So it's, there's no question that the zoning the city engages in, and obviously, we're going to talk tonight about, what about zoning for group homes? Where and what should be the rules? That's a program, and therefore, it's subject to the Fair Housing Act amendments, and that program has to be provided such that in providing that program, it does not disadvantage or discriminate against the disabled. And that's just, that's our floor. That is kind of going in principle. And I recognize that that means that you operate that program differently from other things you do. And you do so, and you must do so, because of the requirements of the federal law that says you shall. The question often is raised, "Well, what's a disability? What groups are included within the definition of disability for purposes of this stringent federal law that Jerry Dahl just told us about?" Clearly, mental, emotional disability and, pardon me, developmental disability does not include people with a cold, like me. It's been clear now for over 10 years, probably closer to 15, that drug addiction and alcoholism is a disability and within the scope of the protection of the Fair Housing Act amendments and the ADA for that matter. Does not apply to currently using drug addicts or alcoholics, but only those in recovery. But it clearly applies to them. Case law is clear. So that sort of tells us about the scope. And by the way, the definition for disability is that it interferes with a major life activity. And increasingly, and I think you've seen some memorandum from me, if you don't, I'm happy to provide it, certain conditions of aging, dementia, are increasingly being recognized as a disability because it interferes with your conduct of a major life activity. So we now have lots of case law, and there are civil penalties, which have been imposed upon local governments for failure to reasonably accommodate their regulations and adjust their regulations such that the disabled are granted the same kind of access to government programs, including zoning, as the able-bodied. History in Wheat Ridge, and this is not a long lecture, I promise, another five minutes and we're done, and we can take on questions. But I think you needed that background. You didn't know that's a serious federal law, and the federal courts are serious about enforcing it. In any event, the history here in Wheat Ridge, prior to 1996, the city had a zoning regulation that required a special use permit for any group homes, including homes for the disabled. It provided that there could only be one of such homes per council district, provided spacing requirements, that the homes could not be any closer to one another and given distance. Clearly, the requirement of a condition, excuse me, a special use permit for the disabled living in a home, whereas you're not requiring it for the non-disabled living in a similar situation, would have violated the Fair Housing Act amendments. The council in 1996 and '07 deleted those requirements at my recommendation, and I provided the council with a number of options at that time, and what the council went with was to amend the definition of "family" in the city's code to include four or more persons who are disabled and under the relevant federal and state laws within the definition of family. And there's no surprise what that did. That meant that if you're living together, you're disabled, and you're living, you're unrelated, but you're disabled, and you're living together, and you are disabled within the meaning of the law, you're treated as a family. If you're treated as a family, that means that you're used by right in single-family zone districts, and you may live in these homes. And that has been the pattern the city has used. Council had before it, in 1996, when this was done, other tools and techniques, but chose not to go with them and took an approach that many cities took at that time, which is kind of a simple, you think of it as a definition of family, and that kind of carries throughout your zoning code. It's, I won't call it a blunt instrument, but it's, it brought the city in compliance with the statute. There are other approaches, and that's why we're here tonight and what I want to describe for you. So presently, it's still the case. The definition of family is the way that the city presently complies with those federal laws. Well, it's 20 years later. There's been a lot of case law. There's been Department of Justice guidance that's been adopted. There's also a state statute, a couple of them that are on the books now. I brought them with me. One of them prohibits local governments from restricting developmentally-disabled persons living in a setting of eight persons or fewer, congregate setting of eight persons or fewer, from being able to live in single-family residential districts and declaring that that's a residential use, is a group home for eight or fewer developmentally-disabled persons. And that's true in the state statute. The state statute also goes on, however, to say that it is permissible for, I say cities, it's cities and counties equally. From the state's perspective, you're both in the same business of zoning. You're both providing that same governmental program, and the issues are very similar in counties, of course, for us. That state statute goes on to, however, permit, or to allow the local regulations to prohibit activities in that group home setting that are inconsistent with the use of a home for a residence. And it came up earlier in speakers, and I can appreciate it, the holding of meetings, et cetera, that are attended by persons other than the persons living in the home or their families. And drew that line, and there are some things that can be done, ministerial activities, meetings, clinical activities, and the prescribing of medicines, et cetera, are not things that are usually undertaken in a home. And I say that because one of the kind of overarching ways of thinking about the application of the law is, "All right, this restriction that's desired to be placed, would that be placed on a large family of related persons?" My family personally is very small. It's just me and my dog. But in my family, we're Norwegian, and for generations, there've been very large families, 13 children in my father's family. Now, I only say that because I want to give you a personal example that doesn't perjure anyone but myself, so I can use that as an example, and it's safe, but it's true. And the question would be, if that family moved into Wheat Ridge, would you feel that you could tell them how many cars they could have at their house? Would you tell them when they had to go to bed? Would you tell them that they had to take care of their house any differently than the family next door with two people? You could get into that kind of regulation, but you'd have to apply it to everyone, wouldn't you? Because then you're not discriminating, no question. If the rule needs to be, if single-family residences in Wheat Ridge need to have this much square foot for every person, then that's fine, and that restriction can be placed on group homes. But if it's going to be placed on group homes, it can't be placed in group homes exclusively, because what have you done? You've treated them differently from any other group of the same number of people right across the street that just so happened to be luckily related because their last name is Norwegian, and they're all related. That's the analogy, and I think it's important to keep that in mind when we look at the kinds of restrictions that are proposed. There are some exceptions to that because the law and the case law, and I'm almost done here, the law and the case law recognizes the real world and recognizes that there are some attributes of congregate care facilities that really are markedly different from my Norwegian family. But there are some that aren't, and we've all probably been in a situation where there's just more traffic than we would like out of that house. But I'm not all that happy with some traffic on my neighborhood, but it's not a group home. It's just people with teenagers. And we could regulate them, but we got to regulate everybody the same. That's the problem. So what can be done? Let me take up the most important thing, I think, on people's minds right away, and that's a cap on a maximum number of persons in that setting. And yes, you can impose a cap, and the law does allow that. The statute is silent on what the magic number is. So communities out there, take their best shot. We have some guidance from the state statute, which is saying eight is the number for developmentally-disabled. That's the number I'm recommending, because if you have a different number for group homes for recovering alcoholics, then you've created a discrimination all by itself that has really no state-level protection. And I really believe that eight is a number that at least you've got some state-level protection. I'll tell you that there are cases out there, one in Colorado in Garfield County disallowing and invalidating a restriction at eight. I'm not saying eight is completely safe, and there's no sort of magic number out there that the Supreme Court has said is fine. Problem is, we don't have a Supreme Court decision. Problem is, we don't have a Supreme Court decision, US Supreme Court decision, on quote "the magic number." So everyone tries. And to some extent, I suppose it's, okay, you said eight, but what else were you doing? Nevertheless, if the issue is, well, if eight is okay, how about six? I'm telling you that it would be very difficult to justify certainly a lower number based upon the state statute. And the case law, I've seen that already at eight raises some risk. And the case in Colorado was in Garfield County, it was a federal district court case. And I think it was a sober home and it was unwound at eight, that I recall. So nevertheless, I'm recommending that. I think it's a number that works, it's a number that's defensible and in the end, that's what needs to happen. We also have some company, it doesn't matter for the district court judge, but we have some company in other cities that I think have been, are in the memo. We did the research in 2012, I think it's still fairly current and if it isn't, it's close. And our neighboring cities, many of them are at about that number. So that's the biggest item, there are a few other things. Be above eight special use permit, yes. And we would propose that as we rework the group home, cardigan care, home regulations in the code, that we apply that same number in terms of special use permit to the other kinds of group homes that the city, don't raise the same issue, group home for children, elderly, we have a couple of other categories that I think if we're going to do this work, we should deal with the group homes and how they're structured in our use charts uniformly. So there's that. In terms of licensure and what can you require? You're certainly not requiring licenses or business permits, are you, from my Norwegian family to live in that house? So I will say that business licenses, some cities are doing them, but the case law is, you know, you can impose a condition like that only if it's really designed to protect the people in the home, not really to service another agenda, which might be, you know, making it a little more difficult to be there. So I will tell you that in terms of the record-keeping aspect, where I think the city can make some progress is this. You can certainly require that the home have whatever state licenses it otherwise needs. And it needs a state license, interestingly, for a sober home, that's a recent statute enacted by the legislature in 2019. In some cases, if you've been operating for thirty years, you don't need one. If you're an Oxford house, you don't need one, but there's at least a little bit of state certification licensure going on, you can require that. I believe that you can require, at least it's not hugely risky to require, so maybe a quarterly certification, that the persons in the home are in fact disabled. Because if they aren't, then they don't, they're not entitled to the protection that the federal law grants them and that you are required to provide as a result of the federal law. And so it's okay to, I think, to have a certification process. For fire and building codes, I know the question is always, well, can't we require different fire, building codes, different exit requirements? Only if, one of two things. You're doing that for the protection of the people in the home specifically, that's designed for their needs and not as just a bar and an impediment. And the courts will look very carefully at how you're making that same requirement on my Norwegian family. Doing that to them? You're saying that they've got to have those things in every bedroom? Then fine, that's not discrimination. Other requirements, parking comes up a lot. The view I have, and I think it's borne out by the law, is that, again, Norwegian family, you're requiring them to file a parking plan or limit the number of cars they can have? No. But you can require, I think, there to be available parking for any staff that is required in the necessary care of these persons. Especially in the developmentally disabled home context, you're going to have staff that's going to be there 24/7, that's going to be taking care of these people and that's a form of commercial activity that you can require parking for, but not other than that. That's my thumbnail sketch, there may be other things that the city could do, but I've gone through the case law and looked at sort of the things that are the major, the major sticking points, major things that you hear, as you have heard from the community. And I understand that these are the issues that are raised. Your ability to service those issues is considerably limited in this arena as compared with concerns that may be raised around the keeping of animals or it's concerns that are raised around weeds or brush or just almost any other topic you can think of that doesn't have a federal statute that has thirty years of case law behind it. But we can certainly bring forward an ordinance and we'll, I expect you'll want that vetted by the planning commission, it will clearly be in amendment, chapter 26, we'll have to go to them. And on this one, I would suggest that it go to them first, rather occasionally, we'll take it first reading at council and planning commission. I believe this process obviously needs a fairly lengthy and considered review process. Thank you for your patience in listening to me with this voice, but in also taking seriously the constraints of the law and the few places that I see that you do have some flexibility and some options. My goal is to have an ordinance that's defensible, that's not the most extreme ordinance in either direction, but I do feel it needs to be defensible because otherwise we're wasting our time a little bit if there is a challenge. I want it to be one that we can stand up behind that ordinance and say that we've considered it fairly. Questions, concerns? Ken, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Doll. Questions from council? We'll start with Ms. Weaver.
Thank you so much, Mr. Doll, for your explanation. And I just want to make sure I understand what your recommendations are. I'm hearing that the state licensure, we require that. I'm hearing a quarterly certification. Is that when we check maximum, minimum capacity? Is that like if we set the permit to eight or, let me just understand. Eight people or special use permit above eight people, the quarterly certification is around occupancy and other safety issues, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Primarily occupancy. Are the certified to us that the persons living in the home do not exceed eight persons and that those persons are in fact handicapped or disabled under these federal and state statutes?
And then also, available parking for staff.
Yes.
So in that regulation, excuse me, not regulation, I appreciate the definition of, in the quarterly certification, that parking for staff would be talked about. We have three people that are onsite staff, there needs to be room for three parking and here's those parking, is that what you're saying?
Yep. We, if I'm the group home, I certify to you that at present, we have three staff involved in the care of these persons and there is off-street parking or enclosed parking or whatever your requirements are for those staff.
Sure.
Yep. You can address that.
I think that all sounds really awesome and I appreciate all of your research on this because it's been interesting, learning all about this. One of the things that I have been learning that seems to be different, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't know if this is the case, but it's been brought up that it was sort of, owners are renting their home to these, a third-party business that then runs the group home out of the house. And it sort of likens itself to the Airbnb issue, right? And I was just curious, is there anything, and it's been, for me, it's been really murky as I think it has been for others, sort of trying to get a whole, get your head around, okay, well, my neighbor who owns the house technically on the, you know, on the Jeffco record, has now rented it out to someone else, to a business. That business doesn't have to have a license. Is there anything that, and again, I don't want to discriminate against anyone, but it's this interesting situation, kind of like when I saw the map of sort of the specter in the room when we talked about Airbnbs, wasn't the ownership of four and five Airbnbs, it was that, what, Travelocity or whatever owned thirty-four Airbnbs, all in a couple neighborhoods? And so I'm just curious if there's, if there has been a change, is this sort of something that has, because it seems like group homes used to be owned, like they owned the home. Has that changed and is there anything on that ownership side? Because what I have been hearing from constituents in District Three is that the owner of the house is also sort of present sometimes and part of this issue. Does that make any sense? Like the owner is, and it's unknown whether the owner lives on the property and I was just wondering if we could tease out, if it's sober living, then it's sober living and that's the only thing that's happening there. The owner doesn't get to come back and have a room if they're, does that make sense? It's just been really, really murky in trying to understand who lives there and who's, does that make any sense?
Well, a couple of things involved in that, that are, it's a couple of sort of interrelated questions. With respect to business licensing, I think it's probably true, our data on this is probably just informal, but it's probably true that there are, that there are more companies providing that service and arranging with landowners to do that. To me, that doesn't translate to, okay, business license, if you're a company that's providing housing for handicapped or disabled, but no business license. If I own a home in Wheat Ridge and I contract with a company, because you can and you do, a real estate company or a management company, to rent my house
Right.
to those people. So how come business license, you see the disparity there?
So if I did that, I would not, the management company would have the business license?
It would, but if the city, yes, I guess my point is this, if you want to get into business license territory, then it needs to be uniform.
Right.
And, okay, Mr. or Ms. landowner who is hiring a monarch, a management company to rent to college students, you need a business license from them too. If you're going to get into that business, you need a business license from them too, unless you can demonstrate that the purpose of your business license for the disabled home and no one else is
So I don't need a business license right now to rent?
Right. And, but so, and so you've got a couple of choices here. Make it uniform, just like if you're concerned about parking, you're making the uniform and every family on the block is restricted to four cars or whatever. And I'm not being facetious, I know the city will not do that, but the point is that, all right, if we're in business license territory, one of two ways to do that, requiring it of anyone who's engaging in that activity, it doesn't matter whether you're engaging in it for the purpose of renting disabled or not.
Sure, sure.
And you bring a lot more people into the business licensing fold in doing that, but you could. The other exception I see in the case law is regulations that are designed to protect the residents of the home specifically and that you can make a straightforward case for it. And there are plenty of restrictions that are out there that have been challenged where the city says, really for the benefit of the residents of the home and the courts have said, we're really not buying that. We think that this is to address the perception of these homes and is more a barrier than not. So you have to be earnestly designing a business licensing program that is designed to protect the individuals in the home in some specific way. So those two things, you had a third question, which was the owner of the home and can they be present? If you've got a home of, that allows eight, and you have to think through this a little bit, and there's one person who's not disabled and is also not a staff person, I don't
But I'm the owner of the house.
And is, I know, fine, and is the owner of the house, I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't have objection to that, I'd have difficulty saying why the city would care at that level. In other words, what would, I suppose you could prohibit the person from living there, but what's your governmental purpose in doing so if the occupancy is under the number? I'm not sure of what the goal would be in doing that.
I guess I'm, and I would love conversation on this because when you have eight people, you add three or four staff, depending on the situation, now you have twelve people and now we have a situation where an owner has sort of, like, I feel like there's, this is a situation where the owner's getting the best of both worlds and I would almost come back and ask Mr. Johnstone, should we be asking for business license for renting? Because I have to, I have to put that on my income tax, you know, on my tax returns if I'm renting something to someone legally. I think it has to do with limits and stuff.
Let me answer the owner question, just kind of thinking aloud, that's not a question I've ever been asked and have seen, you know, so it's unique. And you prepare and you think, I'll be lucky if seventy-five percent is what, you know, and there's twenty-five percent that makes it exciting, kind of fun. And that's one of the, that's the twenty-five percent? I guess I'd say that the city probably has, because that person, that person will assume is not disabled, I think the city has plenty of flexibility around saying whether they can be there or not, so long as the impact of their saying that isn't itself a form of discrimination. I don't think that it is and I think there'd be a way to draft around that, that if you're going to do this
They wouldn't be part of the family at that
Yeah, if it's eight persons, you're, the eight persons that are disabled are permitted along with the necessary persons involved in the care of such persons, period. And this additional person is not
Is either included in the eight or?
Yeah, it could be a disabled person or it could be a caretaker, but if you're some third category, that third category doesn't enjoy any protection under the federal law. So I think you could prohibit that.
Can I ask you a follow-up on that? So on these quarterly certifications, is it in your mind that they're a self-certification?
Yes, there's very, I will say, there's very little case law around this. The certification process I'm describing is kind of, as far as I feel comfortable going on the licensing road, because the licensing road, unless you apply it to everybody, is, I think, on its face discriminatory. And so the certification process is, and I'm going to answer your question, the certification process is sort of licensing light. And I'm admitting that it is because to do more than that, I'm very concerned. Having said that, I've designed a couple of programs, other jurisdictions that include this, and it is a self-certification. It's something that the jurisdiction reaches out and says, these are the requirements, we need to hear from you. And by and large, people have been responding. And I will say that yes, you can lie on a self-certification, but I also believe that the process of having it and signing it, sending it into the city or the county, has an enforcement value that is not bad. And I'm admitting that it's licensing light and it's less than the ability to sort of knock on the door and get inside, just like you can't do to my Norwegian family. And I keep saying that again because I need to remind us why we have to be careful about what we decide to impose.
The reason I ask that is just, if it's self-certification, I think it's like two boxes, right? We continue to have our state group home license for this population of disabled persons and we continue to attest that everyone who's residing here meets those requirements, but there's no names involved or identities. So I'm just to Amanda's question there, I'm not sure how we would tease out whether, who specific occupants of that house would be, whether they be owners or
Sure. I just was curious, if we said it's eight people, right, then the, let's just say, I'm the owner, I'm living in a room and I've rented it out to a group home, that I am considered one of the eight.
Well, I mean, remember, the owner doesn't have the federal protection if the owner is not disabled. And so you could certainly provide in your group home regulations for these homes that they may not include any person who is not other disabled or involved in the care of those persons.
That's a fact.
And for that matter, you can say and shall not include the owner unless the person is involved in the care or is disabled. And then in the certification, you can have is involved in the care or is disabled, and then in the certification, you can have more lines, you know? Certify that, to the extent there is an owner of the property, that owner is not resident, or if resident in the home is handicapped or disabled or involved in the care of such persons. And, you know, I would, I would expect that you could evolve this certification, not to be hugely complex, but to cover the points that you are allowed to otherwise regulate and have them, have them confirmed. And it would seem to me that, that over time, you'll get these certifications back and, and you'd be able to discern some patterns, and you look, you know, as time goes on, maybe we'll look at the case law and see what kind of enforcement we can take around that. But it's, 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 that's an arena you can just tell. I think we need to be very, very careful.
Okay. Mr. Stites had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as I was campaigning and walking through District Three, this is not just an issue on, on, on 30th Avenue, this was an issue on several of the streets, Dudley, Allison Court, Flower, I think it was, and we're talking about several different types of group homes too. There was memory care facilities, things like that, there's a sober living house, and then there's a, like religious type, like almost boarding house or something going on as well. So, I don't know if any of that kind of follows through as well. One of my questions was, as far as like business licensing goes, because for a lot of this, we are talking about medical care, right? We're talking about memory care for, you know, aging, seniors, things like that. Some of the anecdotal stories that I heard from some of those neighbors was that, you know, they're having memory patients escaping at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning knocking on their door. So, is there any way to make sure that the care is being provided at a, at a high level in those, in those facilities? Other than doing a license and inspections and that sort of-
Yeah. I think that's, that's, that's difficult if at the eight and fewer number. It's not difficult at the nine and up. Because then you have entered an institutional setting where you can have additional conditions, it can be a special use permit in single-family zone districts, it could be not available in single-family zone districts because it's an institutional use, you can migrate that to, to, to other zone districts, and you can then engage in the kind of regulation that frankly, we're all comfortable doing, because we're doing that, we believe in the public interest. At eight and fewer, or whatever number you pick, and fewer, it's, it's difficult. We might think about, you know, adding more disclosures to the self-certification to see if we can get there, and no question, getting there kind of through the back door, rather than the sort of frontal regulation, thou must and will cite you in the municipal court if you don't. That, I'm trying to avoid that and still get some of the outcomes, and you can see that's a, there's a real tension there, and you see it even in how I'm trying to present to you, and I wanted you to see that tension, because that's present. But I, I think we can, we can, we can get a long way toward what you're talking about.
And then can I reverse Councilman Weaver's question on ownership? Like when we were talking about the, well, we, when, when there was talk about the Airbnb restrictions, they were talking about how many Airbnb, Airbnbs a property owner could own within the city. Is there a way, because I know some of these facilities are owned by out of state, you know, somebody mentioned like Iowa or something like that, if they're owned in Iowa, who's responsible for the care other than like staff members? Is there a way to restrict how many homes, like a business owns, as far as some of these care facilities goes?
If you do that for businesses that aren't involved in the care of handicapped, sure. If you do that to, if you say, okay, if you want to own a home for rental in the city, then you can only have four of them, and that's for rental for any purpose. And, and, and you probably aren't surprised that I, I come back to that, that kind of answer to remind us that, yeah, if you want to have that rule, it can't discriminate and say, oh, wait, you're providing homes for the handicapped, right, here's your rules. Everybody else knows there's no rule on that, but you, here's a rule. When you get into that arena, you, you can do some rules, and we've talked about some of them, but, but you, I, I think you could do that, but it would have to be a uniform restriction on, on companies owning residential properties in the city for, for rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noslerbeck.
So, with residents being owners and then businesses coming in and renting the home, my question is, if we're trying to protect residents, is, are there some, some things that we can do, like to make sure that if it's going to be rented out as a group home, as a sober living home, that like it needs to be near public transportation? I mean, in the same way that like if it's a memory care facility, they probably don't have a parking problem, because the residents aren't driving cars?
You hope they don't have a parking-
You know, and, and like, or-
That's my uncle, I, I hope, you know.
You know, like I think that we have some state-run homes too in the area, and like the driveways have to be a certain distance and the doorways have to allow for a wheelchair. That's ADA accessibility. A lot of people who are, you know, in recovery probably need access to public transportation. Is there a way for us to protect residents by making sure that, you know, it's not a free-for-all, that like as a homeowner, you can, you can rent out your home, you need to be able to provide your, the residents of a group home with some basic needs. The transportation one is the first one that comes to mind. I, I feel like that is a space to help current residents deal with the parking issues and also protect the residents who would be inhabiting that, that home.
I appreciate you asking that question, because, as I mentioned earlier, the city had spacing requirements and one per district, which is facial, you know, on its face, you know, discriminatory, we're gonna, you can only, you know, only one per district, and if, once that, and once four are here in the city, we're done. And, you, you know, the, the federal court would love that. But the, the, the thing I haven't mentioned, I'm glad you raised, is spacing requirements and sort of locational issues, and on balance, you have to be careful about those, because, oh, you're that kind of person, we want to put you over here, because we don't want you near these other, and, and that you really have to watch out for, but there's a little bit of guidance, I think, in the DOJ guidance, and I've saw, seen a couple of cases around that very point, which is the legitimacy of establishing a requirement that's for the benefit of the residents, and that came up in the earlier question, you know, that, that is an arena where if, if it's truly for them and not a subterfuge, that, that then you can impose a requirement that's for their benefit, because then you're, you're aiding, not discriminating against the disabled. So, yes, I, I, if there's interest by the council in that, I would want to go back to those cases in that DOJ guidance and see if we can get, get some parameters to put around that. I, I wouldn't want to engage in that in a way that, that then just look like we're, we're trying to disperse these people so that, in a, in an appropriate way.
Yeah, I mean, my, my intention behind that question is, is basically to protect residents on both, both ends in this, and it has, it, it's also getting at the issue of people who are trying to, you know, just profit off of maybe having a few properties here. And I, I think that the, anyway, the intention is, is meant to help, help everybody.
That's worth, that's worth looking at, and there is a, there is some support for that. I think we need to craft it very carefully, but, but if there's interest by the council, I'm pleased to, to look into that, because I think there's, there's a way to do something like that.
Well, I have interest in that, I don't know if anybody else does, but-
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'd mentioned something with respect to having a restriction around parking and relating that to staff, so if my butler, my maid, and my chauffeur all show up at the same time, do I have to have parking for each one of them, or? You haven't shown up yet, but I'm just, you know, when-
Sure. I, I, you have a butler and a maid and a, did you say you had a gardener?
Right.
That's, that's one, oh, chauffeur, of course.
Jack hasn't cleared yet.
The, the, the case law and the ordinances that really work say this number of handicapped or disabled individuals and necessary per, necessary persons involved in the care. So, I think it's fair for, to say those persons have to be necessary for the care. Having said that, it doesn't, I, I think you probably have room to say, it's possible all three could be there at one time, we don't know. And so, to say that there's just one space is probably not good enough unless, if I'm kind of playing that videotape forward, the, the, the home were to say, here's our scheduling plan that we will adhere to, and the, the, this probably, chauffeurs are not necessary in the care, but, but, you know, this therapist, this PT provider, this visiting nurse, their schedules are these, and they do not overlap, and for that reason, one space. And if there was a reasonable understanding that that schedule made sense, then yeah, like you, you, you could say it's three, unless you want to show us that, that the scheduling is such that there's really only one parking space needed for staff at any one time.
So, can we, can we say that they would then be limited to one staff member, or are we just saying you only have one parking spot for a staff member?
Well, I, I, I would approach it differently. I'd say that you may have such necessary persons involved in the care, because the number of persons involved in the care is, is not a standard that the city, I think, should be setting. Here's what we think you need. So, you know, I, I really would avoid that. So, it would be necessary persons involved in the care, parking necessary for those persons, for each of those persons, unless, I'm making this up, but unless it's demonstrated that scheduling those persons is, is such that, that fewer than the full number of spaces is required, and then you migrate that into Ken's certification that he's, that he's working on. That was-
I might just-
But I, I think that's how you could handle that.
I, I guess my overarching concern is relative to defining what's the difference between a resident and occupant, a guest, a staff member, and being able to combine those together to equate to a maximum number of human bodies on that acreage at a given time.
Yeah.
And I don't know how, how we can get to there.
I, I think we'd probably borrow from our existing nursing home regulations, which require that you have, there's, it's like a half a space per unit plus spaces for staff during the maximum shift. So, I think we'd probably look at that as a reference point. And as it pertains to the other parking that would be required, I mean, going back to Jerry's oft-repeated point, which is we're treating these like a single-family home. So, our residential parking requirement is two spaces on-site, whether they be in a garage or driveway, if there's available on-street parking. If the street section is such that there's not available on-street parking, then you need to have four spaces on-site, either in a driveway or a garage. So, that's what they'd be required to have in my mind, which would be either two or four spaces to meet the residential use, and then enough additional spaces to meet that maximum staffing shift.
Ms. Weaver.
Just on that, Mr. Dahl, could you also speak to the, you, you mentioned this, the not-resident-meeting clause? I don't know if it's a clause, but what, is this something that can be included, or is it something that already exists in the statute of, and what does that look like? Because I, it sounds like, at least in the experience that was explained earlier, that meetings are happening with residents and non-residents coming in at specified times that are clearly posted meeting times. And what, what can we do for that?
We have some comfort from the statute in, in that, it's found in the county statutes, but it's a, one of those many places where the legislature has put something in the county statutes and then said it applies to counties and cities. So, I'm, I'm looking at the county statutes, but, but the, the same statute for counties that, that, that has the same language about the behavioral, the, the developmentally-disabled eight is a residential use including in single-family, that, that rule, the legislature properly put that both in the county zoning laws and, and in the, in the, the ones for municipalities. They added also in the county one, but made it clear that it applies to, and the, the list is municipalities and counties. They say, "This section is also not to be construed to permit conducting of the ministerial activities of any private or public organization or agency, or to permit types of treatment activities or the rendering of services in a manner substantially inconsistent with the activities otherwise permitted in the particular zoning district." It, "If reasonably related to the requirements of a particular home, local zoning or other development regulations may, without violating the section, also attach specific location requirements to the approval of a group home, including the availability of such services and facilities as convenience stores, commercial services, transportation, and public recreation facilities," again, related to the, the individual. So, there's really two things we draw from that. It, you know, one is that the business about ministerial or other activities taking place in the home that are inconsistent with the use of a home in a single-family zoning district. Fair enough. And then the second part relates to Councilmember Noslerbeck's point about, if you're going to have locational restrictions, it needs to be about helping the people in the home, and these are the, the things that they mention. So, is, does, is that responsive to your question?
I think so. And, and, and with that, I would like to ask for consensus to move this forward with all of the things that Mr. Dahl has mentioned, along with, with Mr. Johnstone, but also with careful research with, with what Ms. Noslerbeck brought up. Could I have, or do you have, okay?
Okay, well, let's, just, if you'll hold on your consensus for a little bit, we'll go to Ms. Ulltein.
Oh, yeah, right, you steal that back.
It's kind of, I already have a cold, so we're good.
Oh, you're-
Yeah, we already got the cold. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of, just clarification questions. One is, the, the citizens who took time out of their lives to come and speak with us tonight, which I'm always grateful for, there's a lot of reference to R1 neighborhoods, and I just want to clarify how this would apply to R2 neighborhoods, the majority of my district is, is R2 zoning. And so, how would these, how would, how would what we're talking about impact R2 neighborhoods?
I think the, to be consistent with the Federal Housing Act, it would apply to any residential occupancy, so any legal residential occupancy, and it wouldn't have to be a single-family home, right? I mean, it could be, as I understand it, I mean, it could be apartment that was of sufficient size and designed to accommodate a group home-type environment. So, any, any zoning of any legitimately legal residential occupancy.
Thank you. So, so if there was a house that was already currently legally a duplex, legally, so already, you know, was built duplex, there's a lot of them kind of in the northeast quadrant, and someone came in and bought both halves, they could convert, they could use both halves for this, this use. Just wanting to, to clarify that.
Yeah, I, I think that they, they could.
Okay. And then another clarification is, so with the certification proposal that's being discussed, what would happen in the event that a group home did not successfully certify themselves? If they either refused to do it, or they were not providing adequate information, what type of enforcement would, would be in place?
Well, because it would be a city code requirement, it would be citable into municipal court, just like any other zoning violation. What, what I would advise the city do is what I advise that they do on, on other zoning enforcement actions. You send a letter saying hello. We observe that you have not filed the required certification quarterly, and we would appreciate your doing so, here's a copy of the form, and we will look forward to seeing this in the, within X days. It doesn't show, if it shows up, dynamite. If it doesn't show up, it's another letter that says, "We have sent you an earlier letter, and you were," I usually do sort of the two strikes before you go to court, because that has, that honestly does work. You take the second try, then you've got, and let's, let's say it's not, and, and you say, "The next step is enforcement, either our administrative enforcement process, which we use frankly for most zoning matters now, that does not municipal court." You know, we have that process in Title I, I think, Chapter I. And, and that's administrative hearing officer, pretty quick, we put that in place because of some zoning junk car kinds of things that sat there for months, and the, the municipal court just took too long, and there were continuances, and it was a problem. But the second letter says, you know, unless we get this, you're going to get diverted into one of the two enforcement arenas. It doesn't show up, they get the, probably the administrative enforcement, because that's faster track, and it's, it's, it's less- and it's, it's, it's less criminal, you know, and lends itself, I think, more to administrative enforcement or other. But that's an enforcement process, and there are fines that, I don't think, we, we don't impose jail out of administrative enforcement, I don't believe. But, but there are fines, and, and ultimately, if those aren't paid, like any other fine, Code 2-6 allows the city is certified to the county treasurer for collection of same manor as taxes, unpaid fines and assessments. So that would be the process. Somewhere along there, under the federal law, it wouldn't surprise me if there was a request for a reasonable accommodation. You've seen that in the case law, if you haven't, I'm happy to share it with you. That even if your rule is this, "We think based upon our particular situation, you should accommodate us by allowing another space or by doing this or that." And the case law is pretty firm about saying, "You need to take up those requests." You don't need to always say yes, but you need to take them up. And we have a pretty healthy variance process that we can use for that. But somewhere along the line on your fact pattern, I would expect they might ask for that. I'm not sure how you reasonably accommodate a failure to just send in the form. But that could be a diversion that ends up in federal district court. But at some point, if, if any of these restrictions are just too much, then there's plenty of case law. What I'm trying to do is avoid that, but at the same time, provide you with sort of as much as you can do within kind of the reasonable bounds of the case law. And I feel on the certification that that's not unduly burdensome of the disabled versus anyone else. And that's the, that's the, the pole star for me in writing things. And the temptation is to say, "Well, if we're gonna do this, can we, can we kinda load in a few more things on that?" And, and there'll be a point, I'm just warning you, where I'll say, "No, I think you've, you've overloaded it, and it's, it's, you've exceeded my comfort zone around what you can do." Terms of enforcement, that's how it would be, two, two friendly letters, and then diversion into probably our administrative enforcement process.
And then just one last thing. Well, just a comment on what you're saying. It seems like it gets, we're threading a tough needle here because we're talking about, you know, a certification and then action against the certifier, who in this case is, you know, the operator, whether it's the landlord or, or a company. So it starts to get really murky to me. We're, we're talking about protections for the residents, yet we're asking certification from, from the businesses. So I expect that that's gonna be pretty tricky when we start looking at what, at what that looks like.
I appreciate you pointing that out because so far, what I've done around certification is done, is kind of relying on the self-certification and the fact that I got that form, I better respond to it. And, and people get in the habit of not only responding, but going, "Oh, they're gonna ask again." You know, "We're up to nine people, we're gonna have to have, have some attrition here so that I can make that certification." Now, that all depends upon, I know you had another question, all depends upon people wanting basically to be law-abiding. And I think we all basically do. I get it, that, that, the, the reason you have laws, a lot of people aren't. But in this arena, that's kind of as far as I've been willing to push the certification, more to kind of self-certification, sort of a self-enforcing process, and I wanted to have kind of light touch on it. And your question is, "Well, but if they don't do it, can we have a heavy touch?" And, and I'm less happy about it, but you know, if you have it, you have to stand behind it. But I would give them plenty of chances to get it right.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for the heavy hand issue here. I'm just trying to like clarify the stickiness. And I guess the last thing is just a request. I've learned a lot tonight, and I'm sure everyone in the room has, has realized why this is a really difficult issue for, for us as a city, but it's, it's uniform everywhere. As we move forward with this process and ultimately come up with whatever we think is best, I think it would be really helpful for all of us to have some sort of, I'm a huge fan of the two pager, but some sort of document that helps, you know, that's easy to distribute to people that have concerns or complaints, or, you know, need to know what their remedies are for any of their neighbors who are, you know, causing the disturbance of peace in their neighborhoods. But I think particularly in this one, since we're dealing with a federal issue that is impacting our neighborhoods, and it, it really, you know, constrains our ability as a home rule city to take action, I think some sort of documentation to really help us communicate with our constituents would be helpful. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
I just have a couple of questions. These homes, are they private pay, private insurance, or Medicaid?
Use the microphone, please, Mr. Dahl.
Could be, could be one, it could be each of them, could be combinations.
Okay.
No way of knowing, in my opinion, no way of, of requiring that the city know.
Well, the thing is, is are medicines being given at these homes by caregivers? Because there should be some regulations, especially if there's Medicaid, as far as how much staff per person in the home, okay? And I don't know about private insurance or anything. I'm also wondering about these homes, could that be a halfway house also?
Well, let me answer that question.
Okay.
Persons in a halfway house, if it's emanating from the criminal justice system, aren't handicapped or disabled under the Federal Fair Housing Act.
Okay.
They would have to separately be disabled in addition to that. But halfway houses, pre-parole facilities, I worked on one of those in Will County, these are all facilities that, that you have to look, the, the person's resident, are they handicapped or disabled within the meaning of the federal state law? And emanating from criminal justice system and, and working your way back out into the world looks a lot the same in terms of adjusting to your new life, but it doesn't benefit from the protections of the, of the Fair Housing Act amendments.
Because it seems to me most group, group homes that I've come across, people aren't driving. Okay, so maybe the sober house is a type where people can do that because they have devices in their cars to tell if they've been drinking or not and things like that. And they can go to work and things. But people with dementia or the handicap that are in wheelchairs, they're not driving. So I think there are regulations, like if medicines are given, if there, any Medicaid or anything about staffing issues, like how many would be there or whatever like that.
Appreciate you raising that as a, you know, is, is that my, quite likely, to the extent there's, there's a Medicaid overlay in terms of what medications may be given to those, to, to various people. My take would be, that's fine, and that's a federal law overlay. I wouldn't be inclined to suggest the city somehow become the enforcer of that. Number one, because it's very difficult to, to know or to do, and the minute you get into that, you have bought into a, another whole complex world that is not your job or obligation to, to buy into. I get it, that the language of, and such necessary, such necessary persons involved in the care of such persons is gonna be the language I'm gonna recommend, and that's by its very nature a little open-ended. But if it came to it, and I suppose the staff was way too, way too many staff, then the question would be, are these persons really necessary? Let me tell you, though, that I think from an economics standpoint, that costs you to have staff there because the staff are not paying rent. So that, I believe, and the number of staff resident is a self-correcting, that's a, that's a self-regulating issue because you, you want fewer staff and more residents because the residents are paying rent and the staff aren't. Not to say that there could well be federal and state requirements around medication, but those, those, the feder, the feds and the state have the right to enforce their programs, and it's maybe not one the city needs to do.
Well, I'm not thinking the city needs to, but then, you know, the feds or the state should be doing it. So, you know, they do make inspections and things like that. So when you're talking about group homes, that's something you can, there should be signs up that state that they've been inspected or whatever like that, just off the wall.
Well, one thing I, I think the city can do is require the, the provision of evidence of, of, of any required federal or state licenses or certifications, which will vary. So there, I'm not telling you there'll be one hard-edged document, but what the city can certainly require, you've gotta give us copies of the stuff that you're required to have by other jurisdictions. That's fine. Happy to do that.
And Mr. Dahl, I had a question, if I may, that you phrased your recommendation for eight or fewer persons, and I noticed that you don't use the word residents, and that would be plus required staff instead of including required staff.
That's correct.
And so that is all by prefer, by intention?
Yes, that's, that's right. The, the, the eight would be the protected class that we're trying to accommodate here, and that number works in the case law by and large. I mean, it's a little on the edge, but that works. I recognize, and council should, that on top of that would be the necessary persons involved in care.
And they may be residents or not residents of that facility.
That's, they, they, they can be residents. If they're not residents, I don't think you, you, other than making sure there's parking for them, you regulate how many people could come in and give services. But if they're gonna be a resident, they fall in the, and additional persons necessary for the care that may live there.
And there's no, there's no sort of other number that would limit, limit that occupant?
No, there isn't, other than the self-correcting kind of economic that I mentioned in response to the question.
Okay. And I had a follow-up, and that is, under the, under the federal law on, on the substance, in the care for substance abuse, is someone, is someone disabled forever in that, in that context?
Uh, the, the, the.
I, I, I had a large drinking problem and I, and I quit two years ago, but am I still a disabled individual?
Yes. You, uh, you're an alcoholic, you're in recovery.
Right.
And that's a disability. And the fact that you're not drinking now and haven't for a year or two or three doesn't mean you still, that, that you're no longer an alcoholic. And the, the medical data is really clear around that point, that you remain an alcoholic. You remain, I'm, I'm less clear about drug addiction. I think it depends on the drug. I will say that, that the, the main arena of, of attention in the case law around that very question has, has not inclu, has not involved people that have been sober or drug-free for years because, to be blunt, they're not living in group homes anymore. They have moved back into the, into the world, and their, their time in the group home has served the purpose for which the Fair Housing Act amendments in part was enacted, to, to help them with their disability. Their disability remains, but they have, they've, they've moved on in, in life, a little different for developmentally disabled that may well be in that home for much longer. The tension around drug addiction and alcoholism in the, in the statute and in the regulation of the case law is usually around ensuring that, that, that there not be, or stating that there not is a protection. If you've got eight people and they're recovering from drug addiction or alcoholism, and there's a relapse, whatever of those persons is, is, is now no longer abstaining is not entitled to the protection of the federal law. Interestingly, even though clearly they're still disabled, but they are now an active user. And the case law and the regulations make kind of an interesting little exception to this hard rule of, "Well, if you're disabled, you're disabled," because I think that they recognize that, that the purpose of these homes is recovery, not providing a place for actively using drug addicts to, to, to live. And, and so the, the definitions of disability carve out, they say alcoholism, drug addiction, exclusive of currently using. And that's the carve-out. Now, it, of course, to some extent relies upon the rules of the House, if you will, which, again, I think is a little bit of a self-correcting situation, just like the economics. It, it, it fundamentally undercuts the purpose of the home and the ability for others in the home to remain in recovery if there's someone actively using. And usually the rule is, the rules of the House for these companies, you start using, you're out of here. And that's, that's a rule that they, the, the operators are very firm about advancing, saying they do it, and being proud that they do, and I'm, I'm glad they do.
And this would be part of the attestation, the quarterly attestation?
Yes, that the persons are, that are resident in the home are, are handicapped or disabled if recovering from alcoholism or drug addiction are not presently using, would be, would be part of this. And again, I, I don't want that poor certification to carry the entire regulatory burden because, because I, you, I have hesitation around it, but I, I don't see a reason that it couldn't be said that way.
And if there, if there were, I guess evidences or occurrences where the, where the breakdown happened, if you had, you know, someone that had gone off the wagon here, then, and was reported to the, to, to the authorities, then that would be a violation of that, or?
Yeah.
And, and I guess you would then accrue, accrue those occurrences against the license, or?
I, I think what I would do is, similar to my response to Ms. Hulteen's question about enforcement, I think it'd be the letter. And because very honestly, in, in that context, I think that kind of communication would be productive. And, you know, "We've received this report, we've got this information." Your latest certification was the effect that, that, and we need you to confirm that based upon, you know, that you have enforced your rules, and that, that the person's resident there now are all presently recovering and not, and not using. And, you know, "Please talk to us." I believe it's, it's very much in their interest to do this. The industry largely wants to be under the radar. I realize they aren't because of the nature of their work, but they, they'd rather have fewer attention given to them than more. And, and that's the kind of thing I think they would respond to promptly.
Okay. We'll start with Mr. Urban and then go, go to Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess going back to your Norwegian family, what if your entire family fell off the wagon and decided to go on a bender? Who's, you know, who's that involved, and how does the city certify that? I mean, it, it seems like you're regulating that activity, but you're not regulating the activity of the family that, you know, throws a raging party or something like that, or consumes alcohol.
Well, if it's sort of an enlarged version of the question the mayor just asked. And for that, I think, to be very blunt, I think this is going to be a situation that's rare to nonexistent, but I'm giving honor to your question, but I, I wanna put it in perspective. If that were the case, if that were to happen, then you would be operating a, a home that did not benefit from the protection of the Fair Housing Act amendment, didn't benefit from the protections in the, in the city code that said you can have eight persons with a disability, but disability does not include presently using. So you've, you've, you're not now entitled to that. You're operating a home for eight unrelateds. Doesn't matter that they're drinking or not, they're just eight unrelateds that aren't disabled, and that's illegal in that zone district. And you're into administrative enforcement right away. That's what you'd do, because again, what they've done now is lost their status as disabled. The minute that's true, they're no different than somebody that decides to put together a home for college students and make a lot of money and jam a lot of people in, and there's, there's ten kids in there, and that, they don't have any FHAA protections, and the city would say, "Not allowed."
Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks. I'm trying to understand how neighbors are notified that there's gonna be a group home in their neighborhood. And so I'm thinking, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but because this is the, with it being eight or under, they're a family, and so they... and so they, it would be discriminatory to, you know, say, this family is moving into, um, your neighborhood? Um, that, I mean, that just seems tenuous to me.
That's correct.
But I, I, I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand as a resident myself, how this could, you know, how would, there could be a group home down the street from me and I not know about it, you know?
And a good outcome would be you never do, when you think about it.
Well, yeah.
Uh, but I will say the case law's-
I like to know my neighbors.
Yeah. Case law's pretty firm about that, because, uh, in, in saying notification requirements, wh- whose benefit is that for? It's really not, is it, for the benefit of the residents of that home. And, uh, it's, that would be a requirement that I would not support. I understand why neighbors want this, and I understand why if, that all of us want to know what's going on down the street and want the government to tell us. And we want the government to, to require that, that people tell us about themselves. Uh, but in this arena, no. And it's no different than the special use permit process. When you think about it, special use permit process is that notification. We sent out notices to X feet, and, and that was one of the main things that I urged the city council to eliminate in 1996 because of its, on its face violation of the, of the law, saying, okay, this category of persons wants to live here, let's have a hearing so we can talk about them. And, uh, the, the cases are, are very unfriendly toward that. And, uh, I know that the issue could be, well, we just want to know. And Cantha City put out a notice that it is aware that there's now this home. And my response is no, that I do not support that, because the purpose of that notice has nothing to do with the safety or health or whatever of the, of the persons in the home. And it's, the purpose is to tell people, there's going to be a group of disabled people living down the street from you. Uh, how's that look to a federal court judge? Why are you do it? Well, people want to know if there's disabled people in the neighborhood. And I think the court would say, uh, your, your purpose here is to identify this protected group and publicize their, their presence to others. The law doesn't support that. You, you, you don't say that about my Norwegian family. You don't get to say that about these people and call attention to them and to their disability.
So just one quick, um, follow-up question to that. Um, I totally get that rationale, and that makes perfect sense. Um, but if we're going to be requiring, like, proof of state licensing and stuff, um, you know, if someone's going to do childcare out of their home, they're required to have a state license, and I think that we, we have to notify, don't we have to notify folks that?
Okay, I don't think so.
Oh, maybe-
Home occupation?
Or at least it's publicly posted or something.
Open, open records laws, now it's kind of that, fine. Certification, whatever documentation is generated, will be in cities' files. And if people, no different than, for example, our, uh, sex offender registration lists that, it was years ago now, but became very popular to file a public records ask request to find out where all those people lived. And that's a public record. And that's available. And the same thing would be true of whatever records the city generates within the confines of an ordinance that I, I will recommend to you, I think is defensible, those records are available. That's different than, uh, proactively saying to the neighborhood, we're telling you about some people that are going to come live here, which I, I do not believe you can do. But Ken, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Ken.
Just to follow up on that, uh, the certain childcare, um, operations of a certain size are special use permits in residential zone districts, so that would require notification.
Uh, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to that point earlier where you mentioned that a good group home is one that you don't know exists, but in the, you know, rare situation where you had 10 group homes on one block, that wouldn't, in my mind, be a good situation to have. So it wouldn't be in the best interest of a group home resident to have another or three group homes adjacent to them, not, not necessarily judging them on their individual behaviors, but just knowing i- if you had more than a certain number in the given area, that may lead to other issues. So you are sort of in that instance, thinking about the residence well-being as it relates to the distance between the different group homes. So that's not necessarily trying to come at it sideways. That's dealing with, with, the, the whole purpose of a group home is to put them in a context that is peaceful and enjoyable, and that is the residential setting.
I, I agree with that. And, and the few cases, because the cases go both ways on spacing requirements, which is largely what we're talking about here, uh, you know, 1,500 feet or whatever, you know, number, we have spacing requirements in other ways that were, that were very free and, and to, to impose. The spacing requirements on sexually rendered businesses, marijuana, uh, medical and retail, we presently have in the city perfectly defensible, because of course they don't involve, uh, a protected class. The few cases that, that have been all right with, and again, it's across the country, it's the same rule in Michigan, gets overturned, you, you know, in Ohio. Same rule. That's why it's tough for me to write stuff, you know, and so I, I, I try to do my best, but you, you, you try. So on spacing, there's some that, that succeed and some that fail around spacing requirements. I, I think if you were to do them, you would have to articulate exactly the rationale that you did, and, and benefit from the recognition in the law that if the condition is for the benefit of these people, not to, to, to identify them in some untoward way, but for their benefit, then yes. So if council's interested in that, we can follow up on that along with the other item I promised to follow up on. Uh, and, and I can see what kinds of limits you might be able to, uh, to place. You certainly won't be in the one per council district arena that we were in, uh, you know, 20 years ago.
To add to Amanda's consensus, the concept of spacing and relationship to the benefit of the occupant of that group home.
Fair enough.
We've had a pretty good, robust discussion. Is there any more discussion we, we need to have before we go to Ms. Weaver for a consensus? Ms. Weaver?
All right. I ask for consensus, um, of the initial, uh, all of the great research. Thank you. I also want to thank all of the residents who came in to speak tonight, um, regarding all of your recommendations initially, adding Ms. Nosler Beck's comments regarding transportation proximity for the benefit of the residents. Additionally, the space or proximity, uh, ideas of not, for the benefit of the residents, not having too many together.
Okay. Raised by Councilmember Urban, okay.
That research, is there, I think I got everything in that?
Do you want to repeat the, can we repeat the others, the-
Sure.
Require state license?
Sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
Okay.
I will go, I'm gonna start over. I'd like to ask for consensus on the following regarding group homes. And again, I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight, and, um, so that we move to, um, create a cap on maximum occupancy at eight residents, was that? Eight residents? Um, that we have a special use permit above eight people, um, that we address the available parking for staff, um, that there be a quarterly certification, and that that quarterly certification refer to the appropriate state and county licensure, which is appropriate for whatever type of facility it is. Um, additionally, uh, the, the two recommendations regarding the welfare of the residents in these houses, having to do with proximity to, um, additional benefits such as transportation, as well as the proximity and density of such group homes together, um, and, and how we can create recommendations that are positive for the residents. I'm asking for consensus.
Do I have a cons-, do we have consensus on that? Okay. Mr. Dahl?
Very good.
How was your note-taking? You've got all that?
I've got the notes. I really appreciate council's attention and time and thoughts on this, and I'll get it drafted. It'll go to planning commission, and you'll see it in the fullness of time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna take about a five or eight-minute break right now, and then we will go to item number three.
And then we will go to item number three.
I just wanted to echo what Councilman Urban said about making sure that we look at and explore some options for programming to help with some of the youth that are dealing with this issue. I mean, I'm just going to share a little bit of my personal experience with regular cigarettes, but I started smoking when I was like 14 or 15 years old. And it took me all of my twenties to get over that. And if this is more addictive than what I was going through, this is a real challenge. And I think we as a community need to find a way to make sure that this license isn't just about enforcement, but also making sure that it's helping our community, our students, kids. So to that effort, it seems to me that a lot of our portals and gateways to be doing intervention and if we're going to be looking at funding mechanisms to help with the actual addiction and cessation. Additionally, regarding age restrictions, we're going to be reviewing raising the minimum sales age to 21, establishing a minimum clerk age. Under additional regulations, we'll have, we'll be reviewing whether we should require tobacco products to be behind a counter or to touch the clerk. To restrict new tobacco retailers to be located within 1,000 feet of a school, prohibiting mobile vending. And then we'll also be going into enforcement and we'll be asking you all if we should be doing local proactive enforcement. And if we should be establishing a violation schedule that can result in suspension and the revocation for continued violations. We understand that some of you weren't here for a presentation back in August. So if you do have any general questions about the topic and about tobacco, just let us know. Additionally, if council has additional items that they'd like to include in an ordinance, that we can discuss that after we go through the list. So just know that there'll be time for that. And once council, if council provides consensus on these options, then staff will return with an ordinance to present in front of council for consideration. So the first topic, tobacco retail licensing. Back in August, Ms. Nguyen described the tobacco retailer licensing as the umbrella to which all of the rest of the policy options should be considered. The point of the retail licensing would be to prevent illegal sales to minors, reduce accessibility and visibility, reduce youth access and tobacco products. Additionally, a note from our 2018 resident survey said that 77% of the, of our residents thought that retailers were already required to become licensed to sell tobacco, when in fact, they currently are not. This license, should it be considered, would be separate from the business licensing, a business license, but it could be streamlined to be rolled into the business license annual process so that it could be streamlined. Currently, we do not have anything in place. And so the first item of discussion that we're going to open up is, do we have consensus or do we have discussion on having, requiring a tobacco retail license?
Okay, we'll throw this up. We're going to go, I guess, through these one, one, two, three. So we'll do questions after every, every round. So discussion questions from council. Ms. Weaver.
I would just like to say I totally support this. So I'd like to move for consensus around this.
Okay, is there any discussion before we go to consensus? Mr. Urban.
How's this deal with any online sales or are, is tobacco available to be purchased and sold online and how would this interact with that?
Thank you for the question. So this ordinance would not, you know, regulate any sort of online sale in the city of Wheat Ridge. That would be probably something completely separate that the state or a national level might look at. It is certainly a consideration because that could be one avenue where, you know, minors might obtain tobacco. From the Healthy Kids Colorado survey, which is the survey that looks or asks high schoolers and middle schoolers how they obtain their tobacco products. And just to clarify, when I say tobacco products, that includes cigarettes, e-cigarette, you know, vape devices, all of that, that's wrapped into tobacco product definition. A significant number of them still say that they get it from a physical source, a brick and mortar, you know, a gas station convenience store, a pier, et cetera. So this would not get to anything that might be obtained by an online source. This would just look at what's happening, you know, physically in the city of Wheat Ridge.
And I guess my next question is relating to sort of this concept of limiting the supply or restricting the supply is the pinch point here. But as it relates to prevention or cessation efforts, are, is this the best place for us to be putting our efforts? Or is there another place for us as a city to be focusing on the prevention or the cessation as opposed to this particular regulation? And I guess how does this regulation equate to fewer kids using?
That's a great point. So this is absolutely not the only recommendation. There are, the CDC and Public Health Law Center and the medical experts have outlined what they say is the best practice around reducing youth tobacco use. And it includes a number of layers, right? Includes what you said, it's education and prevention, includes cessation. And then policy is municipal or local policy is one piece of it. It's a very big piece of it. It probably moves the needle the most just because it's able to capture so many people and limit the supply. It's a lot harder to regulate, you know, use and behavior on the other end than it is to look at supply. Also, I think the nurse from Wheat Ridge earlier was talking about the role that the schools play. So definitely the schools are working on prevention in the schools. You know, the health department, we get funding and a lot of the work that we do is in the community in partnership with schools. So we definitely provide education. We also work with healthcare providers to refer to cessation resources. We just know that from the research, the impact of something at the, on the backend like cessation services is much smaller. You put a lot more dollars into it for a smaller benefit than, you know, far upstream like policy. And it's also, you know, these products are so addictive to the young brain. Their brains literally get rewired when they introduce nicotine to it at a younger age than if they were, you know, already fully developed. It's, it's harder to get treatment and be successful at cessation. Especially because a lot of the cessation programs that are out there are tested to be effective for adults. And it's harder to really, you know, verify and reliably provide cessation program, programming for children and teens. And so the hope is that we would do our best to prevent them from ever becoming addicted.
Ms. Weaver.
One of the things that I was, been amazed with in learning all of this is, and why the licensing is so important, is we're talking about products that are, and help me remember just the, the cost. Sort of between $10 and $20 for the packs. What are the?
Oh, they vary a lot. A pack of cigarettes is somewhere in the five or six dollar range. And the vape pens, the really popular jewels, a starter pack can be, they used to be about $60 for the starter pack. And, and the pods that you refill them with the nicotine juice were, I don't know, $15 to $20 for a four pack. The prices really vary because they go through discounts and they go through different things, but they're not.
The thing I was surprised at in, in learning about this was just the amount of money that's being made at each one of these gas stations. It's, it's just daunting. They're in flavors for kids. They're clearly marketed to kids. It's, it's really ridiculous. And I'm going to date myself, but it's worse than the vending cigarettes that we used to have. Well, anyway. Yeah. This is, this is a very real thing.
Ms. Hulteen.
So we're, we're still talking specifically about the licensure. So regarding the licensure, what, again, this is similar to the question about the group homes. What would licensing, I know it's in the packet, but just more specifically. So if we agree that we are going to require a license and in the packets recommended an annual licensing, is that correct? Is what, what's being recommended? And so that, that would then, if there are violations on the other consensus items that we'll be looking at after this, then the license is really like the blunt force that we can use to, okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You have a, a number of $300 on the annual license? That's what they usually run in, in our state?
That's the next topic, but we can.
Oh, is it? Okay.
We can roll it in if you, if you want. The next topic, so we can, we can come back to it, but the next one is if yes, then how much? So the average in the metro area is about $300 for, for the license, the annual license. Additionally, most, if not all of the cities are including an application fee as well. So the average for that is about $100. That's exactly what Lakewood has. They have 300 and then the 100. Our neighbors Denver, their license is $500 a year with the application fee being 250. And then it's a little lower for Golden, but they're also reconsidering to have it be a higher amount. So on average in the area is about $300 for an annual and $100 for an application should council decide to pursue the license.
Mr. Urban.
I would say it's somewhat difficult to determine the regulatory cost, the understanding the pool of applicants and the pool of eventual recipients of the license. And also understanding is that, is it our goal to cover the cost of regulating these entities? Or is it our goal to cover that cost in addition to a proactive cessation program or other efforts to stem the tide? So I guess as we look at this, trying to figure out how many licensees are we expecting to get? What's the cost going to be to administrate that? Those are numbers I don't have.
Well, and that's something that came up last time, and I think it's a good question, is that right now we don't have the numbers and how many exist because they're not required to, you know, to self declare in that way. And I think that the state doesn't have their accurate numbers as well. Could you expand on that?
The state has an estimate based on how many they have registered to, or, or, you know, paid certain taxes. But it's not an accurate number. They, they acknowledge that. I'm sorry, I don't have the number in front of me, but I want to say that the estimate for Wheat Ridge is in the 40s to less, fewer than 100, more than 40 retailers. But it, you know, it's, it's not a sure number anyway, but that is the estimate that I remember is in that range.
And for your second question, that is something that we could consider as well. If we want to look into additional programming, we can take that back when we move, if we move forward and we've received consensus to move forward. We could come back with a couple of options for additional funding could cost X, Y, and Z. If we want to include any sort of educational program, we could do some research on that. Right now, the $300 is an estimate to cover exactly the proactive enforcement.
And we haven't done an analysis yet. We can though of what the staff, what the cost would be for staff time to manage the licensing program, but we'll do that before we bring back a final ordinance.
And I'd also like to understand any sort of fine schedule or other revenue in the program as it relates to those that might violate the program. You'd mentioned the, the tax list with the Department of Revenue or the, the list of retailers that have a tobacco license or something like that is. The, the state has some sort of list of retailers that sell tobacco, but maybe that's not even completely accurate. So trying to figure out how do we handle someone who doesn't comply and what kind of fees or fines could be charged in that instance? In addition, any sort of criminal issues.
Okay, additional discussion. Ms. Nosler back.
I just wanted to echo what Councilman Urban said about making sure that we, we look at and explore some options for programming to help with some of the youth that are dealing with this issue. I mean, I'm just going to share a little bit of my personal experience with regular cigarettes, but I started smoking when I was like 14 or 15 years old. And it took me all of my twenties to get over that. And if this is more addictive than, than what I was going through, this is a real challenge. And I think we as a community need to find a way to make sure that this license isn't just about enforcement, but also making sure that it's, it's helping our, our community, our students, youth, kids.
Ms. Hulteen.
So to that effort, it seems to me that a lot of our portals and gateways to be doing intervention and if we're going to be looking at funding mechanisms to help with the actual like addiction and cessation. It seems like a lot of that work is, is being done by regional partners. So would, would we also be able to include like, you know, what are the existing programs that we could be supporting through those funding mechanisms? So that we're really maximizing, you know, what's, what's already in place. Because if we're talking about our schools, you know, those are at the district levels and crossing municipal boundaries. And certainly, you know, just different intervention, you know, public health is really at the county level in so many ways. So I would be interested if we are looking at that, evaluating the, the possible funding mechanisms that we can institute. But then where would those funds be going towards and what kind of work they're doing?
And do we have, let's go back to the consensus question. Do we have consensus to regulate or to?
Required licensure.
Required licensure. Okay, so the answer to that is yes. And with respect to the, to the fee that licensure should be in our city and, and by extension, how we might, how we might spend those funds. Do we want to look at a recommendation to come back from staff about the, sort of the cost of implementing the program and the, and the cost of enforcement? Before we set a, set a fee for that?
I would just like to add, based on my, my other comment, that this is a product that producers are making tons of money on. And I, I don't have a problem having that application fee and have it be higher because I, I think it's a real big problem.
I guess maybe the question then is, do you, yeah, do you want, do you want the fee to be aligned with just covering staff costs or some on top four that we could give to programming?
Yes. Over the top for programming. Do we have a, sorry, is this an additional or is this a new?
Yeah, I don't think we have a consensus yet on, on fee. I think if we could break it down a little bit more to that, if, again, if you want it just covering city costs or do you want additional funds for programming?
Okay, I'd like to ask for consensus that the, that the fee be based not only on city costs, but also on the additional program that's been discussed.
Modification to that. So I, how do I say it?
Just talk.
Just say it? Okay, I'm just going to say it. So I totally agree with Amanda that I think that we should, you know, exercise every opportunity to create barriers to access. And, and I want to make sure that we're including in, we're not just talking about the initial licensing fee, but the escalation of violations and, and having those escalate, you know, quickly and severely. Yeah. So it seems to be kind of conjoined in there. But, but, so when we're looking at that overall funding mechanism, truly make sure that that's, that's part of it as well.
So consensus to cover city costs and then some type of overage for programming. So we'll, we'll bring back some recommendations on that.
Okay, Ms. Schelling.
All right, the next is going into the age restrictions. And so we're going to be first talking about the raising the minimum sales age to 21. The current regulation for the purchase of tobacco in Colorado is 18. Jefferson County Public Health recommends increasing it up to 21. You'll notice on the sheet that a lot of our peers are doing that age 21. A lot of our neighbors are doing age 21. So, and as was spoken earlier, we have Denver and Edgewater. So, and as was spoken earlier, we have Denver and Edgewater already 21, and then Golden is considering going up to 21, I think, next week. So, let's, let's talk about that, what do you guys think?
Discussion, Ms. Noslerbeck?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a question about when you raise a minimum age to 21, like, does it create a, like, black market? And is, is it increasing, you know, crime in our high school? Or are there any numbers on, on that now, a jewel pack? I, I've never purchased them before, I don't know what I'm talking about. But like, is that now $150, somebody's buying it from somebody at school or whatever? That's, that's my biggest concern about raising the age. I'm in support of it, but I just think it could be a-
So, from what we've seen in the research, it's actually the opposite effect because there are 18-year-olds who are in high school, who are seniors, who are legally purchasing. And so, they are, they serve as a significant social source for underage minors. Whereas, most high schoolers don't have 21-plus people in their social circles. You know, people who are friends or close siblings who would break the law and buy it for them in that case. We actually see a big reduction in use and initiation in that 15- to 17-year-old when it goes to 21 because it cuts that legal in-school source. As far as the black market, I don't really have an answer to that. We haven't seen any, you know, reliable, credible research that shows that that has happened when it has gone up to 21.
And so, then would, like, if there, and maybe this is just a broader question. If a student who's under the age of 18 is, not a student, but just a, a youth, is using, like, what kind of fine do they get as a, as an underage consumer? I mean, like, in, if you were drinking alcohol, you'd get a MIP or something?
So, the ordinance and everything that we have discussed and recommended in our previous session relates to regulating the sale side and the retail provider side. We do not recommend, I guess, regulating the behavior side of the youth, especially, you know, criminalizing young people for addiction to nicotine. We do not have research to support that that is effective. And so, everything here is really just talking about people selling it.
Additional discussion? Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is quite timely. I was at Walgreens the other day, and they have actually decided as a policy for their organization that they have raised the age to 21. And so, I think it's really interesting. I'm a little, a little back and forth. It's really hard for me to kind of reconcile the fact that we consider an 18-year-old an adult. They're old enough to be sent to war, and yet, we're telling them that they can't drink, they can't smoke. And I, like, I understand that. And one of the facts is that 95% of kids will smoke before the age of 18. So, I think that whether we raise the legal age to use tobacco or not, it's still going to be prevalent, yes?
Can I clarify that statistic? It's actually that 95% of smokers started before.
Started before.
So, it's not that 95% will try it or use it. It's that when we look at adults who smoke, 95% of them started by the age of 21. So, the, the policy is saying that if you can make sure that they don't start by that age, chances are they'll never become addicted to it.
Okay, yeah, so I'm, I'm, like, generally in support of this. I think that this is definitely a movement that's happening across the US. And I, I know that it's prevalent in our schools and it's, it's really become an issue. That's not necessarily my thoughts around that. It's just that it's kind of your black market comment and, and whether that's something that we need to be aware of or even a gray market. And then, I, I don't know if we'll touch on this in a second, but as far as 21-year-olds or having to be 21 to sell it as a clerk, yeah, so that's, that's also, that also raises an issue 'cause, I mean, we don't regulate alcohol in that manner. You have to be 18 years old to serve alcohol. And, and so, I might be a little bit more comfortable with, with regulating it similar to alcohol. And so, I don't know, this, this is, this is a tough issue. You wanna, you wanna protect the youth and also, but it's, it really comes down to enforcement. And I like that you, you're being proactive. But, I mean, is that going to be, is that going to be something that we're doing on a regular basis? Is that going to increase the costs of?
So, that'll also be something that we talk about. And the, the last section, we talk about enforcement, is how often we would like it to be regulated. So, we can discuss it now or we can wait until later?
Otherwise, sorry, thanks.
More discussion on the minimum age to purchase tobacco products. Ms. Hutchinson?
I am for regulation for the age of 21. There's always gonna be a black market. There's black market on pot. So, and, you know, I, I think that's a good start, and it's also a message. And this is a, it is a public health crisis. We have people that are dying, okay? We haven't even addressed vitamin E acetate, the oil that's in it, which, like, I think the physician, I think you're a physician, right? Mentioned about the young child who had lung transplant. Yeah, in Detroit area. They don't do that on 16-year-olds. So, this is an avenue for us to try to help prevent death. And I would hate to see anything happen in Wheat Ridge, which it is happening all over the country.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Mr. Urban?
I would say that in general, I, I would like to see it remain at 18 simply because that is the major, it's age of majority that they're legally able to enter into contracts, they're able to go off to war. And if that's their choice, which we have to allow choice in our community, then so be it. I just, I don't see the, what I'm afraid of is that we, we pass these regulations, we say we raise the age limit, but we do nothing to curb the current crisis that's going on. And in my mind, the raising the age to 21 just doesn't do it for me, and I, I won't be supporting it.
Additional discussion? Do we have a consensus to raise the minimum sales age to 21? We have consensus on that.
Okay, great. So, the next topic is the clerk age. So, currently, the age is, as we spoke before, is 18, similar to the sale of alcohol. Best practice is saying that we should have increased the age to 21. I think that is all that I have. So, yeah, council may consider increasing the age to 21, keeping it the same or something, something else entirely.
And maybe for the new council members, we had this discussion recently as it pertains to alcohol, and the same question, and we decided to leave it at 18, not raise it to 21, if that makes a difference in your decision-making.
Ms. Hulteen? Sorry?
I did wanna add one quick thing, and, and Ms. Wing could probably speak to it as well. But one of the reasons that it is recommended to stay, to be increased to 21 is due to the potential for clerks to be selling to underage peers. And that is something that, that, that we are seeing. So, that is something that to consider when, when discussing.
Thank you. On this, I, this one I felt a little bit torn on. As I've said before, I'm very enthusiastic about creating as many barriers as possible. I think, I think to create a different age for alcohol, for tobacco products is, is maybe a little inconsistent at the municipal level. And then, I'm also just thinking, in this particular employment market, to limit access for those retailers to actually hire people is, is tough. I know this is a really tight job market, and if we are eliminating some of their, their job applicants, it's, it's not, you know, helping their general business as well. So, I think for that, my preference would be an 18 age restriction. So, thank you.
Additional discussion? Mr. Stites?
I think I agree with Ms. Hulteen on this, that because, because of the job market. Now, I do understand though, that a clerk at a store has more ability to be alone with their customer than, say, a server at a bar. So, there's kind of that, well, I can, I can sell that over the counter or something like that. So, I do understand that, but I, I believe on a practical basis, we'd probably better leave it at 18, like we have with alcohol.
Ms. Noslerbeck?
As we're talking about the licensing and then violations and the fines, I, I, for the same reasons that Councilperson Hulteen and Stites stated, I think it just impacts, impacts the businesses and their ability to attract employees. I think it would be really important to make sure that if, you know, we, we have any violations, that it's, it's a hefty fine for selling. And we have a way of regulating that and making sure that that's part of, especially if someone under the age of 21 is selling to someone at the same age, you know, underage. I think there's probably some good language that you guys can articulate better than I can at 9 o'clock at night. I, I think that that would be, that would get the point across, too.
Additional discussion? Is the consensus to leave the age at 18 for sales, sales force? It is, okay? Ms. Schelling, moving right along.
All right, so the additional regulations, the first one that we have is to require all tobacco products to be behind a counter. This would require a clerk to be the one to actually hand it to the person receiving the tobacco. So, this, yeah, this, it would be just the regulation to have the clerk touch it. So, again, up for, up for discussion.
It's up for discussion, discussers. Ms. Weaver?
I was just catching up with themselves. No, again, I think this is super important, you know, since I have been learning about this, 'cause I too had not sort of understood. My, my students at the university are constantly, right, they're vaping all over the place. But once you start walking into these places, they're everywhere, and they're, they're, they're at point of sale, and, and it's too easy. They need to be behind the counter.
Mr. Stites?
Definitely, and I think as we were talking about black market and you're raging, raising the age to 21, you're talking about more kids that are gonna be looking for that product. So, you wanna take away the, the temptation for shoplifting and things like that. So, definitely put it behind the counter, I think, is a, is a good regulation.
Additional discussion? Mr. Urban?
I guess I'd be curious how this applies in a humidor or cigar shop or other sort of retailer that's solely for tobacco and how this particular regulation applies in that situation.
So, that is absolutely up to you to decide whether you want to make it a blanket regulation period. So, any tobacco product across the city has to be behind, behind, you know, not accessible by, directly by the customer. We have seen, the table that's included in your packet shows that every neighboring municipality has this provision in their licensing. We have seen exceptions for something like a cigar bar that restricts, you know, in this case, it would be 21. So, they wouldn't allow anyone in who is under 21. But there would probably need to be language in the ordinance specifying that, hey, if you're a business that primarily or solely sells tobacco, it needs to be restricted. You have to have signage that says no one under 21 is allowed, you have to make sure to card, et cetera. So, we have seen some communities make this behind-the-counter requirement exempt, or those types of businesses exempt from this specific provision.
And I think we do have certain, something, Mr. Urban, in our code about cigar bars that if they have a certain amount of their sales comes strictly from tobacco products, yeah, they, they have different, they're under different restrictions or less restrictions. And we could, we could look at that and maybe align it with that somehow.
But that's like what I'd like to consider, is to not necessarily dictate how a business designs their point of sale and to say, behind the counter or on the counter? Or, I don't know that I would necessarily want to restrict it any more than some other product like alcohol that's on the shelf, that's able to be grabbed and run out much easier than, I, I don't know that I've ever seen tobacco products outside of not behind the shelf, except for like in a cigar shop. So, I just, it's gonna be hard to define what is behind the counter.
Mr. Stites?
I was just gonna say, we can bring back some options too. We'll look at these other ordinances from the neighboring communities and see what type of language, and we'll bring back different options for that.
Well, I guess my question was kind of along the line, like a smoker-friendly store, one of those, like, they would have to have like a, like a bar, like, almost somebody there to card people as they go in, like a liquor store, I guess, too, same thing, okay?
Do we have any humidor's in?
We, we do have tobacconists and cigar shops, you know, that, that sell the product. You know, Cubans, maybe, I don't know.
So, we can bring back a little bit more information on this at first reading or future study session on what, what the definition of behind the counter is and give you some options.
Do we have consensus on, on that? Bring back a better definition and, and some idea?
Do you wanna add to that?
Okay.
I just was going to clarify that usually, the language in the ordinance is no self-service display rather than behind the counter. The language isn't, isn't behind the counter usually. It's that you cannot serve yourself that product.
That makes sense, yeah. That's reasonable.
And for example, Lakewood says no self-service displayed allowed, except within the definition of tobacco retail business that the city manager referred to where a certain percentage of their sales is tobacco. It's almost all of it, right? And they have to restrict entry to those of age.
Okay, very good. Ms. Schelling?
All right, so the next one is have no tobacco retailer within 5, a thousand feet of a school. So, most regulations that we're seeing have this between 500 and 1,000 feet. 1,000 feet would mimic our marijuana licensing regulations. Additionally, council can consider whether or not they want to grandfather in retailers that already are selling tobacco products that are within 1,000 feet of a school and are good actors, and then they would be subject to the similar regulation enforcements as the rest of the tobacco retailers. So, this is a two-part question, which is, do you want to regulate this so that there is a distance, a minimum distance threshold of 1,000 feet from a school? And then, if yes, two, would you like to grandfather in retailers that are already within the 1,000 feet threshold?
Discussion on this issue. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say that as it relates to existing places, that there should be a grandfathering is that, that this isn't the only thing that they're selling. There's other things that they're purveying. So, I, I would ask for that. And then, as it relates to a distance requirement for new tobacco retailers, I don't know, and I haven't seen the evidence that suggests that that reduces the likelihood that they're gonna obtain it. So, I, I just, I don't see the effectiveness in that element there. So, it looks nice to say that, that we have that 1,000-foot limit, but if we keep putting this 1,000-foot limit around schools, we're not gonna have anything in between them. So, we gotta stop somewhere, so I, I wouldn't support it.
Additional discussion? Ms. Weaver?
What else do we have the 1,000-foot limit on? Do we have it on alcohol? Just marijuana, but not alcohol?
Yeah, it's different categories- Yeah, it's different categories, and Robin could speak to this. Different categories of alcohol licenses, not all, but like a restaurant liquor license, that's less than 1,000 feet now. We got rid of that regulation a while back, but Robin?
But a gas station selling beer, selling full-strength beer, can it be close to a school right now?
Well, there's one that are established. There's no requirements from schools to be restrictions. Any new FMV's or liquor stores, again, I think 500 feet.
500 feet? I guess I would like to make it consistent with whatever we're doing with alcohol. So is regarding the grandfathering in and regarding new businesses? Because again, I think it creates a dual standard that, you know, around vices.
Additional discussion? Mr. Stites?
Kind of along the same lines as like a gas station selling full-strength beer, what does that do with a new gas station that wants to move in? Just like on Kipling near Everett or somewhere near Weavers, something like that? Would we not be, I mean, I know gas stations sell gas, but their primary money comes from what they sell, I think, inside. So, and I would think tobacco would be a big piece of that. And what about grocery stores, things like that?
Yeah, if you put a distance restriction, it would, it depends on what you guys decide. So, I mean, if you want a new license, they can do it. So depending on the feet, if it's 1,000 or 500, we'd look at that when a license comes in and what they're going to sell. So, yeah, that would be an implication.
Kind of along with what Councilmember Urban said, I guess, if we do move forward with the feet restriction, I would support the grandfathering in. I'm not sure that as we've raised the selling age and everything else, that foot restriction is going to be worth it. But if we do, I would support 500 feet, something similar to what we do with alcohol.
Additional discussion? Do we have consensus to make the distance requirement 500 feet and grandfather existing tobacconists from that restriction?
And again, from your, just to give you more background information from your spreadsheet in your packet, Golden, Lakewood, Denver and Broomfield both have ordinance that says no new tobacco license retailers issued within 500 to 1,000 feet of a school. I don't know if you can speak to that, need a little bit more, but do they grandfather all the old businesses in for perpetuity or?
I believe that all of them do. So I think that's why the word "new" is in there. So no new businesses, you know, you can set whatever date you want to set. If you're in operation, if you obtain your license by this date, then you're good. And after that, if you're a new business, you can't. But those communities that have checkmarks on this list all have that feet restriction, either 500 or 1,000. But I do believe that they grandfathered in existing businesses.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the fog of 20 years of trying to understand liquor licensing. If I open a restaurant and I'm granted a liquor license, does the liquor license go with me, the building, the business or with the building? Because I know that that's been like very confusing. And I'm asking that to translate that to what we're talking about. So can someone clarify that for me?
Robin, can you speak to that?
The licenses issued to the empty at that location.
Okay.
So if it's transferred, you have to stay in that building. You can do a change in location of the liquor license, then the loan will be returned.
Okay, so but if I, if my business closed down and Bud, the opportunist, opened his business there, he would have to apply for his own liquor license? Okay, great, thank you. Then I guess I, I think this is a really tough one, because these are like more generalized business models that we're talking about, unlike marijuana sales, which is very specialized and focused. And when I'm looking at the type of economic development that we'd like to see happen along our corridors, I'm not saying I'd like to encourage more sales of tobacco products, but I'm also a little bit wary of anything that's too restrictive of economic development, because a lot of times it's not, they're not leading with it. So I would be interested in maybe looking at restrictions that are more stringent for new licenses that are just for tobacco sales. So whether it's like a smoker-friendly shop or something like that that is maybe a little bit more focused just on tobacco and it's not as restrictive on our more generalized business use. So I don't know if that's something that we could thread.
And Ms. Quinn, could you speak to, have you seen any difference in?
100 feet, 1,000 feet, any sort of school regulations? Are there statistics?
To go along with that?
I don't, I have not seen research that, excuse me, has looked at that specifically. I was just looking here. It just says that experimental smoking among youth is correlated with the number of tobacco retailers in high school neighborhoods and communities where youth live. But it hasn't. I have not personally seen a comparison between 500 and 1,000 feet. I can look and follow up.
Mr. Stites?
So, and I think Ms. Hulteen was getting to this, or maybe she made the point and I missed it, sorry. But the, so if, let's say, a gas station goes out of business and the next gas station there, they're closer than 1,000 or 500 feet, they wouldn't be able to get a tobacco license then. So, I mean, that will have some pretty significant impacts on, as those retailers go through, so.
Would anyone like to forward a consensus then? Well, I'll start with one, then why don't? Then the question is whether we want to have a distance requirement from a school or similar institutions, I guess daycare or other types of businesses, or not. And so do we have consensus not to have a distance requirement?
Yeah.
To not have it?
To not have one?
It's always something we can, you know, you can bring back at a later time. You could address these other issues, then we could think about this more if it's something you don't want to tackle right now.
Right now, we're sort of structuring how we want staff to go back and to craft the ordinance. Ms. Nosslerbeck?
Could we get more information on just like what we accomplish by having the location further away? So that we can back that up? Because I'm landing that I think it's more of a conversation about, you know, what we want to do at a national level, at a federal level, on if, you know, gas stations can sell tobacco products anymore. You know, it's starting to get really big as we talk about it more. So I just want to make sure we have the numbers if we're going to move forward on any of it.
Do we have consensus to not make a decision on this issue right now and get some more information? We do have consensus on that.
But go ahead and bring an ordinance forward with these other issues we've talked about tonight. Okay.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be possible, I just think about, I'm just mapping elementary schools in my head and they're just riddled along our commercial corridors, which is where we want them to be centrally located. Would it be possible to distinguish middle schools and high schools as opposed to elementary schools?
Sure, you can do any category.
What are thoughts from other people on that distinction? It would be a little bit less restrictive. It would obviously impact Kipling significantly, but does that seem like a distinction that makes a difference to people?
Any feedback on that? Mr. Urban?
I just don't see how that's going to effectively reduce the sale of these products when we already have the age limit of 21. I mean, the retailers would have to be actively breaking the law in order for this to be a concern. So I just don't see us needing to put this 1,000-foot limit or any limit around schools because we've already raised the age limit so much that it just doesn't seem right.
Mr. Stites?
I guess for me, if it's not a, if it's not a gas station, it's not a supermarket, it's not a combo, but if it was like a specific tobacco store, I could see the distance because you're then, subliminally, the kid is driving to school every day and seeing. It's the same reason you wouldn't necessarily want a marijuana shop or necessarily a liquor store right there, because they're driving to school every day and they have to see that. But it's like if it was a gas station or something like that. So is there a way to carve out and say if it's for a specific business, a specific, we could do something like that?
Yep, definitely.
I would support that.
Sounds like, though, maybe phase two on this question. Okay, we'll continue researching that.
All right, let's move to the next one. Ms. Schilling?
All right, next item is prohibiting mobile vending. So this would require all tobacco retailers be located at a fixed location. There are currently mobile vendors that kind of operate a food truck or DoorDash-style business model and they deliver tobacco products. And they would be prohibited from selling tobacco in Wheat Ridge. Best practices find that it is difficult to ensure that mobile vendors do not violate zoning provisions and they're almost impossible to find because you don't know where they're going to be day to day. So opening the floor for prohibiting mobile vending.
Okay, discussion on this issue. Mr. Urban?
Yes, if Amazon were to allow tobacco sales and I purchased a pack on there and had it delivered to me, would that be mobile vending? Because, you know, they had it in stock somewhere in a warehouse in Weavers and they delivered it to me. And so it's somewhat of a mobile vending, but it's being done online, so.
I think that would be considered more of an internet sale, I would think, but it's a good question.
We may need Mr. Dahl back here to give us a definition on mobile vending.
I believe it would just be applied to not granting a business, you know, a business the license to be able to sell tobacco in your city from a vehicle or anything that's not fixed so that you, you know, the point of the license is that you can do undercover compliance checks. And if you don't know where they are, if they're not fixed, you can't check them.
But I guess to that end, if I have a delivery service for tobacco and I'm delivering it to residents in Wheat Ridge, is that allowed? Or so that they've ordered from me and then I'm delivering it to their house? So I don't have a retail location for them to go to, I'm just, they're ordering and I'm delivering it?
Well, maybe we just say the opposite, where you have to have a fixed location. To get a business license to sell.
Or no mobile, including deliveries, or something in the language?
Mr. Stites?
If I wanted to buy marijuana right now, is there a mobile dispensary license or anything like that? Or a mobile liquor store or anything like that?
There is new legislation, yeah, that allows it.
Okay.
And just this last year. And I honestly can't tell you the specifics of it right now. I don't, I don't think we brought it up here. It allows local jurisdictions to allow it and we didn't, I don't think we've discussed it here yet.
Okay, so if I, sorry, I've never heard of the business. I mean, I guess it makes sense, but so if I order an Uber and I say, hey, on the way, stop.
It's a Grubhub.
Or I order a Grubhub or something like that and I have roommates in college who used to do stuff like that. So, I mean, is that?
Probably happens.
Totally. So is that a?
We can order right now, we can deliver it here.
Did you find something?
Buy a food truck, sweet.
And that, excuse me, is there any provision that prohibits you buying on behalf of somebody else? I mean, we're talking about a lot of kind of transference, like regulations here. And do we actually say like you aren't allowed to buy these products for another?
It's going to be a little hard to enforce and regulate.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree with that. I'm just curious if something like that exists, okay.
So I guess the question is, are we concerned about home delivery? Or are we just, is that different than a mobile source and actually licensing a mobile source?
I only have, you know, counsel to give on one piece of that. So I'm not sure how you want to deal with the actual mobile delivery, but the recommendation is just not to license the sale of vendor who is not in a fixed location.
Ms. Nosslerbeck?
So I don't want to get too far down another track here, but one article I had read about this was that a lot of the pods or whatever they make are made at home or not in a regulated place. And so that's how a lot of younger, and that's where you get like an overdose of the vitamin E, is because it's happening because they're homemade. I'm just wondering if also this is where we're getting at with the mobile vending and stuff, too? Or how those are getting, how we, if we even want to touch the regulation of that stuff? I mean, maybe it's too late.
I think it's easy to do a blanket restriction on the mobile vending, that the city's not going to provide a license for mobile vending. I'm not sure if we can probably legislate all this other stuff that we're thinking about, at least right now, until maybe it becomes a bigger issue that we know how to address. I would recommend just sticking with the mobile vending piece.
Ms. Weaver?
I'd like to support that, because I think that if we just ignore it, it's still going to continue to happen. And the people who are being highly regulated in town, that's really not fair to them.
Do we have consensus then to prohibit mobile vending? We do. Ms. Schilling?
Okay, moving on to enforcement. We're first going to talk about doing local proactive enforcement. Best practices recommend doing proactive enforcement twice a year. Jefferson County Public Health finds that enforcement is really is the key component to a successful regulation. This could also be potentially tied in with the enforcement with the underage sales. So you could potentially have it where we have our underage, someone who is not older than 18, younger than 21, who can come in and buy alcohol and tobacco at the same time and potentially be able to do a two-for-one in terms of enforcement for our staff, which may be something to consider. The cost of enforcement, again, will be determined, but it could hypothetically be covering, the fees from the license would hopefully cover a portion, if not all, of the enforcement costs.
Ms. Weaver? Well, you know, you're coming up, you know, it looks like you're going to, you know, milk the goat.
Would anyone be supportive of some of this? Because now we're talking about the fee, right? We're talking about the licensing fees and the?
We're talking about the enforcement and then when we come back later, we'll come back with a fee and kind of like a fee table of all the options. So in terms of like this would cover this, this could be something that we could add on for education or supplementary services.
How much enforcement?
So we'll give you a little table to work with.
Okay, because I think this would fall under enforcement. But I'd really like to see, especially if we're going to allow 18-year-old clerks, some sort of education around the products and, you know, the same kind of stuff that we're sitting here talking about. Is that unreasonable? I mean, does anybody support that as far as like training clerks around the issues of why you shouldn't sell it to your friends?
That's absolutely best practice as part of the license.
Okay.
So proactive enforcement? Consensus to have proactive enforcement? Yes?
Great, and last but not least, so we have, right here, you have a list of what hypothetically we could do in terms of working with violations. People have found that when you suspend the licenses, it has a greater effect than necessarily having a minimal fine. So what we would want to see is, if you would agree with this table, if you have any suggestions for altering it, that would be great, too. And this is similar to what the city of Lakewood does. So the first violation within a three-year period, the tobacco retail license would be suspended for seven days. The second violation within the same three-year period would be a suspension for 30 days. Third violation within the same period, suspension for one year. Fourth, within the same period, that would be revoked, they could potentially reapply in two years. And for others that, you know, they get to the third strike or the second strike after the three-year period, it would reset, they'd be back at zero and then they could go again. So what do you think?
Mr. Urban? Mr. Urban.
Yes, part of this goes to kind of the, the crux of all regulation in that the harshest penalty we have is that you can't have a permit or you can't have a license. And so, in some ways, it's, you have someone that doesn't want a license to begin with, gets in trouble for, while they have a license and now they don't, you know, they just sort of blow it off completely. And so, one of the things I'd like to consider is how do we include the location or the physical address in the licensing process so that if they have three strikes, then not only is their license suspended for a year, but you can apply for a license in that location for a year? Because that, that would put more onus on the landlord or the property owner to make sure that this is happening. Because you could have a licensee who's suspended have their brother open up a shop or get a license for the shop. So, doing something that limits the ability to just hand over ownership to somebody else to then apply for.
Okay. See what?
Robin, do we, we do something similar, maybe you weren't following that conversation, I'm sorry, something similar with liquor?
Yeah, there's a, there's a definition of liquor law that gets suspended within the last two years, they can't get, or revoked within the last two years, they can't receive another liquor license from the same location.
Okay, so maybe we could model some of that language?
I just want to make sure that it's something that is substantial enough to, to work as opposed to making it so that it's just sort of being hinted around and not actually being dealt with.
Uh, Ms. Hutchinson.
Why isn't there a monetary fine? That's usually where it hurts people.
The tobacco control experts at the state recommend suspension of license because the average convenience store makes about fifty-five thousand a month in tobacco sales. And so, usually a few hundred dollar fine is not a good disincentive. But if they can't sell for seven days, that's thousands of dollars for them. So it actually serves as the bigger punishment. You can, you, you can decide to set a fine of five thousand dollars or, or whatever.
Well, how do you know they're not selling for seven days?
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to obviously put a staff person down there and watch them for seven days, twenty-four hours a day, but that could be part of the enforcement. You know, we could drop in and make sure, but there's no guarantee you're going to stop them.
Right, I mean.
But if you, if they get caught, that, that could be a revocation of their license permanently. You could make that a, as part of the ordinance, that, that there's tougher penalties once they get caught.
With suspended, Mr. Stites.
Is there a possibility of doing a combination where it's a fine that maybe goes to the city for enforcement, that sort of thing, and then the suspension of the?
Sure.
Because I, I guess I'd like to see, I guess, since we have to spend the money to go in and do it, and I know we're doing it with licensing too, but maybe on the backend, there's that as well. And maybe some of that money that goes from the fine can go to some of the education or something like that, that you then need to put the staff through or something like that before they can get that back. But, but I'm definitely in support of the, the loss of the license because that is a lot of money and that's going to give the owner of that, that business the incentive to make sure that their eighteen-year-old clerk isn't handing out cigarettes to underage kids, so, but maybe a combination of both.
Okay, do we have, do we have consensus on kind of the outline that's printed in our packet and then a fine on top of that? That, that can be, Mr. Urban?
One thing I don't see necessarily outlined in here is operating without a license, straight off the bat, just not even seeking a license whatsoever. How is that handled in such a way to make it untenable to do that to begin with? Because you don't want to make that penalty to that being, we're going to suspend a license you don't have for seven days. They're like, okay, great.
You know, I, I'm not sure.
We could add a layer there.
We could, we could do some thinking around that. I mean, you could be then prohibited, you could get a fine and then be prohibited from applying for a license for a while or something, something along those lines to, as a disincentive to, you know, to be, to be doing that behavior. When?
What I've seen in other communities that have licenses, it, it's outlined kind of in a different place outside of enforcement because this is about enforcing businesses that have a license. So you're right, in the section that talks about who must get licensed and what it means to, to not have a license. Cities have made it, if you're caught selling without a license, you're violating city code, that's a criminal penalty. It could be a fine, et cetera. So yes, that is, is always specified in the license as well, what it means to operate without a legal license, the legal right to operate.
Ms. Nosler back?
Don't we want to encourage people to become licensed and pay the three hundred dollars? So couldn't it be like, you know, you have five days to apply for a license and pay the fee? You know, and then if you don't, then you have to pay this fine or something?
Yeah, it could be similar to a building permit also. If you don't pull a building permit, if you get caught doing work, you come in, you have to, you pay double the permit fee to get your license, or your building permit fee. So you could do something similar to that. Or suspension, revocation, they can never get a license again, could be as tough as you want. Sounds like there, there's, it sounds like there's a, an agreement that we want to do something with those who are selling without a license, some type of tough penalty to begin with. We can bring back recommendations on that.
Should we, do we have consensus to bring back some recommendations that, that sort of provide some of those other, other features? Okay?
I just want to add that when we do bring it back, we'll also be discussing the education and the rollout period and the anticipated timeline that it would take to actually implement a program. So we'll be working with our administrative staff to see how long it would take them to feel prepared to roll out, to roll out the program. So that'll be part of the discussion as well when we think of how long it'll take for us to get the information out and how much education people have. That could be something to consider when we think about if, how acceptable it is that somebody hasn't got licensed during that period.
Okay. Does that, does that get you all of the things that you need? We did. Ms. Hutchinson?
One, oh, sorry. One thing I haven't heard about is advertising. Should we still have advertising in these places or not?
Okay, what's the thought on advertising?
I think this goes into that bucket of what else do you want to consider? So, there have been communities, I don't know if any in Colorado, but there are communities across the country that have included advertising restrictions in their licensing ordinances. And that, you know, it, it completely depends on what you choose. So, some communities have said you can't have tobacco posters or ads below three feet because a lot of them are at, you know, child height. Some say that you can't have them facing the outer wall. So when you're walking by a convenience store and you see all of those ads, they say you can't have them on your window, for example. So there's no prescription for that. We have seen some communities include advertising restrictions. So that's definitely something you can explore if you'd like.
Just a couple other things. What about one eight hundred quit now? Does that work with vaping?
So, one eight hundred quit now, yeah, the Colorado Quit Line has expanded their services to deal with vaping and they've actually lowered their age. They, it used to be that you have to be fifteen to enroll in the, the free program and now they've lowered it to twelve to meet demand, unfortunately.
Okay. Okay, and one other thing, I don't know if, I get the newspaper, so I read the newspaper. Last Wednesday, Massachusetts banned tobacco-flavored vaping products immediately. The governor signed that. And also for June of next year, they're banning menthol cigarettes. And they did that on their own because, as I understand, the only way to get federal regulation is by the CDC and the FDA. So they didn't want to wait, so they just are doing it themselves. So they're the first state.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Just real briefly too, while we're still on the topic, Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec Director is here, she has an interest in this topic and, and there's other cities that have done, and maybe provided incentives or programming through their Parks and Rec Department. And there's one thing that Karen's looking at with providing incentives to our youth to, to turn in vape equipment to the rec center, that maybe they get some free passes to the rec center or, or other options. So that's something we're looking at. I think Broomfield was the, Broomfield was, was a community that, that's done that. So that's something that we're, we're looking at potentially doing also.
Sort of a buyback program?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Holte?
I'm going to kind of backpedal a little bit on my like, regional prevention buy-in. One thing I was thinking about with this is, I know we currently include vaping as prohibited in our parks and recreation along with smoking and marijuana and a variety of other regulated substances. I would love to see if, if it, or at least take a look at, can we use some of the funding that would be coming through this program to increase the signage in our parks and enforcement in parks around that? Because it's currently a significant problem in some of the parks and it's, it's a hard one to enforce. So I don't have the answer to that, but I'm, you know, if, if we're taking action as a, as a council to really try and curb vaping use, you know, amongst, amongst the youth, you know, where it's being used in our public spaces, I think is, is part of that. And even though it's been addressed through regulatory, you know, the programmatic aspect of it could maybe be looked at as well when, when we get to that point, but, thank you.
All right, Ms. Weaver.
Since we're talking about our wish list of vaping items, one thing that you may not be aware of is the trash that is produced. It's toxic, it's actually toxic waste because it's both electronic and the chemicals inside of it. And so, I think there's also possibly an opportunity for our sustainability group and maybe Parks and Rec, maybe we can figure out something around, especially if we're, if we're getting people to bring in these products. It's, it's pretty horrific, there's a whole nother. Can you say two things about, I, I mean, I know we talked about it initially, just about the pollution aspect of it?
Sure, so you're right in that the, the E products that are popular among youth now have lithium batteries, so we know that that's E waste that shouldn't be disposed of in regular landfills. And then the, whatever chemicals are in them, they vary across products, but the nicotine itself is a P-listed hazardous waste because it's poisonous and toxic. So if you get some of that on your skin, you know, an animal or small child could actually be poisoned by the contacts to the nicotine. And right now, there are, aren't standards and regulations around proper disposal of them. So you can absolutely look at whether you want to, you know, mandate that the products be disposed of properly versus in your trash can or on the park sidewalk or whatever.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, any other discussion around the vaping, youth vaping, tobacco policy? Well, thank you very much, that was a good discussion. I look forward to having staff bring that back to us. Thank you. Okay, we will conclude item number three and move to item number four, Mr. Goff's staff report.
Nothing else this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, okay, thank you. We will go to then elected officials' reports and we will do this by hands. Anyone has a report that they would like to make, I'm happy to call on you.
I have a question.
Ms. Holte?
Mr. Mayor, being new to council and some of the regulations, is it possible to propose a topic for a future study session at a study session?
Yeah.
Excellent, well then I'm raising my hand.
Okay.
So you might have noticed it snowed last week in the fair city of Wheat Ridge and I, I received a handful of concerns and complaints about snow removal. And I, first of all, not what the city does, the city, I've, I've heard nothing but like amazement at what a good job Wheat Ridge does for snow removal. And I think any one of us who had to leave the city of Wheat Ridge and go into Lakewood or Denver or any of our surrounding communities noticed the difference pretty quickly. So kudos to our city for, for doing a great job on that. One thing that I've noticed is that along our commercial corridors, a lot of our businesses that contract for snow removal, oftentimes those gigantic mountains of snow get pushed right into the sidewalks. And while normal snow removal, you know, we had a lot of snow last week, but it will take, you know, I'm hoping by the end of this week, we see the ground again. But those mountains that are three to four feet high will probably not melt until January and they're blocking public access and public right-of-way. So I would like to propose that we take a look at enforcement of snow removal along our commercial corridors and, and take a look at, you know, are, are we enforcing our own existing regulation and do we need to look at any additional regulation that prohibits piling snow into the sidewalks that then doesn't allow the natural snow melt to, to receive?
Yeah, just briefly, that's not allowed. So it's mainly an enforcement issue and, and we have a lot of folks push, just push it into streets too, which is not allowed. So it's more of an enforcement issue at this point. We did look, bring this to city council a couple of years ago. Our code at one point never had any requirements that anybody scooped their sidewalks or, or anything. So we finally got that added to code a couple of years ago and we kind of, I think there was consensus to, to take a, a year or two to see how it would go, to see if people are voluntarily taking care of these issues before we start fining people very proactively. And I think it's been a couple of years, the first couple of years after that was very light snow, so we didn't have any good opportunities to test it. And now we're seeing it and it's, I don't, people still aren't doing it everywhere in the city, so, yeah, we can have another discussion about it and see how, see if we're ready to, to pull the trigger on enforcement and how, how tough we get. We didn't, there wasn't a lot of consensus a couple of years ago to, to be very, real proactive on it, on fining people and criminalizing, especially if people don't have the resources to do it. So I think it comes to that too, that we need, you know, hopefully businesses have the resources to do it, but personal sidewalks in front of residential homes, there's a lot of folks that maybe can't, don't have the capacity to do it. So do we want to provide some type of program and your funding to help offset some of that? Yeah, I think I got an email, maybe y'all, I don't know if y'all got the email, maybe it was just from somebody who said, you know, another option is we, we've, we've adopted orphaned areas throughout the city that are really, it's not real apparent on whose responsibility it is of, of, of doing that. So we, we hire a right-of-way maintenance company that will go out and do those areas for us, so we could add more areas on that list. It just, it will cost the city more money, but if we want to get those areas cleared, that sometimes might be the easier way than trying to enforce on whose, whose responsibility it is.
Yeah, I'd like to bring that forward, just, I mean, we do have pedestrian, priority pedestrian routes that are identified in our bike pet plan. And, you know, those are principally routes that are served by transit or connect neighbors with services. So I think, you know, enforcement within the neighborhoods, but I'd, I'd like to really focus on those pedestrian corridors that people need to access in order to access what they need to, to connect with the city.
We should have two counselors that, that support that, so Mr. Stites will go in there with you on that. You've got that down?
Got it, yep.
Okay. Ms. Nosler back?
I just was going to see if we could also add to that. The, I mean, it's been on, Kyle Clark with Channel Nine News and stuff has been tweeting about how RTD and the city of Denver don't clear any of the RTD
Bus shelters?
Bus shelters and locations and so there, it's causing some real problems with ADA accessibility and people aren't able to move around. And so I just would like for us to address that too, how are we dealing with that in Wheat Ridge?
Yeah, and we can do that real quickly again, too, we, some of the bus shelters are city-owned and our contract we have with the right-of, right-of-way maintenance company, they go out and clean those, but some of the shelters are RTD-owned and and if we can't, yeah, if they're not gonna come out and do it, we, we call them, just like C-Dot, we call them to do a lot of things, and it's, it's when they can get to it, or if they just don't, see, you know, RTD doesn't have enough staff to, to drive their trains and buses, and they probably, I don't know if they have enough people to snuggle, but we can add, maybe those are areas we add to our orphan list too, and the city just takes care of it.
Okay. Ms. Weaver?
I know no one's still here in the room, but I just really wanted to thank all of you and thank, uh, the citizens that came in tonight. These are both two issues, uh, at least two of the issues tonight were near and dear to my heart, and, um, and I just wanted to, uh, say that both of those issues regarding group homes and, uh, the vaping were, were brought, uh, by Wheat Ridge citizens. And, um, I just wanna encourage everyone out there, um, to talk to us in our districts about things that make their quality of life better and the things that they're thinking about, because, um, it's been, it's been really neat to sort of have these issues come to fruition and, and have that input from the Wheat Ridge community. So, thank you all.
Okay, any other, um, public officials matters, elected officials matters. Okay, then if we have no more business to come before our study session, we will stand adjourned, and see everyone next week.